Here at DeJohn Middle School. And we will open it up with the pledge allegiance. And then after the pledge allegiance, we have the land acknowledgement. And from the land acknowledgement, we'll proceed on. And at this time, let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand. One nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will go to the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. Good evening. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenia, Mowatma, Parkin, Oloney peoples. And acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And now, welcome to the meeting here at DeJohn. We will get started. To the meeting, once again, welcome to tonight's meeting about, we're about to go into closed session. But before we do, the board is here to receive public comment on any closed session item. That is agendized. The board will then adjourn to closed session. And reconvene in open session to continue with the regular agenda at 6:30 PM. If you are attending the meeting in person here at DeJohn. And you wish to make a public comment now on a closed session item. You would need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak. If participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon. In the Zoom app. On by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone. There is no yielding of time to another speaker and there is no substitution of speaker permitted. Please finish up the agenda, me of the the of the orange hand. If you are here in the audience and if you are in the Zoom attending by phone, please get aligned to speak. By raising your Zoom hand now. To access translation of the agenda. Click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available. By Zoom, by clicking the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the brown app. Board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda. And do not usually respond to item presented in public comment. Please note that the order business may be changed without notice. And at this time, we will have the roll call, Dr. Hurst.
Thank you, President Christian. President Christian.
Present.
Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening to everybody, present.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Present.
Trustee Phillips. Trustee Phillips is not currently here, so we have four board members that are present and one absent. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hurst. And now we will proceed on with the agenda. We will look at the closed item session of the agenda. Government code five, four, nine, five, seven, dash, seven. Which we will go into closed session. So. Are there any public comments for closed session?
There's no public comment.
Okay. And if there's no public comment for closed session, now we will go into closed session. And we will see you back here at 6:30 PM. Thank you. Five minutes, set six, seven minutes and then we'll reconvene at 6:40. And call to me no order. And we will now proceed, I'd like to say good evening to everyone. We just came back from closed session. And now. If you are attending the meeting in person here at DeJohn and you wish to make a public comment now. Make sure you fill out the cards. And that way you will be recognized. To access translation of the agenda. Click at the top of the webpage using the word English for the translation of multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available by Zoom by checking the globe. At icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the brown app, board members cannot discuss items that are not listed on the agenda. And do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now we are moving to. Now we're going to be to report a ratification of the closed session and Dr. Hurst.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We'd like to report the following from closed session. Claim one, undisclosed minor. Regarding agenda item A 6.4. The board voted unanimously to reject the claim presented on behalf of an undisclosed minor student. Dated five, nine, 2022. Related to alleged personal injuries. Claim two, A Turewski. Claim number six, zero, seven, eight, nine, nine. Regarding agenda item A point, 6.4. The board voted unanimously to reject the claim presented by A Turewski. Claim number six, zero, seven, eight, nine, nine. Dated five, twenty, twenty, twenty-two. Related to alleged employment liability and personal injuries. Also, the board voted unanimously to approve this breed love. For the King Elementary Principal for Summer School Extended Learning. And it was a unanimous vote. The board also voted to approve the principal for Lake Elementary School. Ms. Jeanne Williams. And that was a unanimous vote as well. And also, the board voted to approve. The Director of IT Operations, Dr. Wayne Lacy. And that was a unanimous vote as well. And that is the report from closed session.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hurst. Appreciate that. And now. We are moving on to B three, which is public comment. As a reminder, public comment will last for no more than one hour. Indicate any agendas or non-agenda item. The time allotted per person is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, please hand in your orange request to address the board. Form now. Once we start, we do not accept more. If participating from Zoom, raise your Zoom hand now. If on the phone, press star nine. There is no yielding of time for substitution of speakers permitted. Due to the brown app, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented. And public comment. And. We will now. Go to public comment and we'll start in-house and then we work our way on to Zoom.
Our first public comment in person is Kristen Persley.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst and board. My name is Kristen Persley. And I am Vice President of the Adult School Teachers Union. I'm glad to have my job back and I would like to thank everyone who helped to restore me to my position. My recent firing by email as a temporary employee. After 25 years is actually part of a pattern I have experienced throughout my career at the adult school. After teaching part-time since 1997. I was hired in 2003 to manage a new Yale Civics Grant at 35 hours a week. I was asked to leave the classroom then because at that time lead teachers did not teach. But I made it a condition of taking the job that I'd be allowed to teach 10 hours a week. In 2008, the Director of Adult Education asked me to leave the classroom so I could take over running the ESL program. After the Vice Principal of ESL was promoted to Principal and not replaced. I had to take on many additional duties at no extra pay. While continuing to do my Yale Civics job. I asked for a new job description and title to match my new duties, but this was denied. I gave up teaching as requested from 2008 to 2015. Even so, I worked many hours beyond what I was paid for. Even though adult school teachers don't get overtime. In 2015, after being told by a new principal. That HR was looking at my position because I was not in the classroom. I was called into a kind of tribunal with the adult ed principal and vice principal and someone from HR. I was told that I was a substitute and did not have a real job. News to me, I had been working hard for 12 years. It certainly felt like a real job. At the same time, adult school teachers are being told incorrectly. That they had no right to sick leave or even to check out equipment because they were just substitutes. We decided it was time for a union. We were recognized in 2017 and are still bargaining our first contract. This year, negotiations have slowed to a halt and last week.
Our next public comment is Gail Louie.
Thank you. I have worked here for 27 years as an adult school teacher. And for me, the final straw was when Kristen Persley and Ken Ryan were fired last week. And then after a outcry from people, they were put back into their positions, but this is just outrageous. I am imposed the way that adult school teachers. Our union leaders and ESL programs are being treated. Teachers have been working without a contract for four years. Teachers are being involuntarily resigned. Put into classes that they don't want. Classes that students want are not being offered. We want the school board to step in and enable the teachers to get a contract. We want the harassment that has been going on against the teachers to stop. So I think you should put us on the formal agenda. There's many people besides the teachers here. There were teachers from Oakland outside protesting. There were students that are very upset saying, why did they get fired? They're good teachers. There are people saying, this is crazy. The school board made a mistake and fired these teachers. If it was a mistake, why did the person in HR send two letters? Saying that they were fired. Why did the superintendent say it was a personnel matter? Why were they being told that there was a question of their credentials? Kristen and Ken have worked 28 years and 25 years. So I don't think it was a mistake, but it's as Kristen was saying, it's a pattern. A pattern of treating the teachers and our program as if we were not important, but we have taught. Hundreds and thousands of students and taught them English and people are very upset at all these things that are happening to our program. So you should do the right thing and help.
Our next public comment is Kate Burkhardt.
Good evening, board and Dr. Hurst. I'm a participant at St. John's Senior Center. That a program that has been sponsored by the school district for many years. We are concerned about what's going to happen now that the program has been defunded. Funding ends the end of this month. And we have not heard anything exactly what is happening and we hope that the district is. Participating and giving all sorts, all service and assistance that they possibly can. It's important that we have these programs for seniors at this time. The isolation for seniors is very detrimental and should not continue. This is a one-day program a week. That is not a large amount of the district's budget. But we hope that we can continue come September with new funding from Measure X. And we hope that we will hear some updates soon. We hope that there will be no more accidents or mistakes in letters in the future. Thank you.
Our next public comment is James Nebelmann. Oh, sorry.
Yes, good evening. I sent.
Hold on one second, sir. Trustee Phillips.
Dr. Hurst. Could you please clarify for the second speaker that the board did not or was not involved? With the issues regarding Kristen Persley and Ken Ryan?
Absolutely. Certainly. The board was not involved, the district was not involved. I actually have a statement that I was going to share at the very end. However, I will just share with you. That indeed, even though I was not at the solutions meeting, that it was an error. However, the district is also taking action to investigate the matter. So we did share in the solutions team meeting that we are going to have an independent investigator to investigate. That issue and that results will be made public. It will come to me, it will come to the board, but also it will come to you. Again, just want to clarify that indeed there was no conspiracy, Kristen, Ken. Certainly, we apologize for the error and that's exactly what it was. It was an error. But again, there is an investigation that's going to be done and performed by an independent investigator. So just wanted to share that with all of you. Thank you.
Our next public comment is James Nebelmann.
Yes, my name is Jim Nebelmann. I've been teaching ESL since 1987 and I have a master's degree in this field. And I've been teaching low beginning and literacy level ESL here in the adult school since 2012. And last fall, when I spoke up in defense of the older adult school, older adults program, I said that administrators. Can only do a good job when they listen, listen to teachers and students. Unfortunately, the adult education principal has decided to eliminate all online literacy classes. For ESL students without consulting literacy teachers like me or asking us what our students want. And as the other speakers have said, this is part of a pattern of disrespect. Towards our adult school program that has only gotten worse with the union busting termination. Now rescinded of our new union's president, Ken Ryan and our vice president, Kristen Persley. Who have been extraordinarily effective lead teachers in our ESL program for decades. Guiding and saving our program through countless cutbacks and challenges. And the willful and capricious dislocation of one-third of our ESL teachers. Who are not allowed to continue their current teaching assignments despite good enrollment numbers and the wishes of their students. Three-fifths of our bargaining team have experienced retaliation for their. Fruitless four-year-long effort to obtain ASTU, our union's first contract. Kristen Persley, Ken Ryan and Bob Mandell. Who has taught a very successful multi-level class for years. But has now had his online class canceled, has been forced to teach in person. Despite his age and his family's vulnerability to COVID. Bob has been outspoken in his union activism and is now being punished for it. Anna Turewski is another teacher whose rights have been violated. Despite her well-documented disabilities, our principal denied her the opportunity.
Please conclude your comment. Our next public comment is Karen Lang. Our next public comment is Karen Lang.
Hello, my name is Karen Lang. I've been an adult school teacher since 1999 for this district. And I've worked with the two people who were let go mistakenly. The whole time I've been here, they're fantastic leads. They back up everything the teachers need. And we, we really, we formed a union because we had so many problems and I am part of the negotiating committee. For the union, we, the negotiating committee has met with three different CBOs. We were getting somewhere. We had made progress. This last person that's. Seems to be very kind and then nothing happens and nothing happens and promises are made and nothing happens and. It goes back around and at the end of a meeting, we've negotiated for what? We're not sure. It looks like we went backwards, not forwards. I was speaking to the African-American President Parents Association outside while I was waiting to come in. They have the same issues, but there are a lot of yes, yes, we'll help you that comes to nothing. I think we need programs that are for our students, our teachers, for the, for the betterment of this whole community. That come to something, that matter that make a difference. And the outgoing principal was able to make all kinds of changes to our program, but he's gone. In the last week, he was still making changes that would not serve the community, would not serve the students, would not serve the teachers. And he's not going to be here. And for example, we had 17 elementary school programs in our. Adult education program because of COVID, all of those are closed, but he has refused to reopen them. And there are schools asking for programs and he wouldn't go back.
Our next public comment is Christina Fidler. Christina V. Fidler.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Hi, my name is Christina Velazquez Fidler and I'm here with Mira Vista. We saw what happened at Valley View and we don't just want to talk about moving forward. We need you to acknowledge what happened at our school. To apologize and to tell us how you will hold our administrator accountable. Please don't gaslight us and tell us that everything went the way it was supposed to. We want you to openly say that when a parent emails the school that their trans child has been targeted and bullied with hate speech. That a daughter is being sexually harassed by a staff member. That a daughter's eye socket was crushed by another student. That a son has been threatened to be shot and killed on campus. That you're supposed to respond to that email, not ignore it. That's gross negligence and I want you to say it. We want you to spell out what's supposed to happen when parents report these incidents. What the communication is supposed to be to those families. And what accountability looks like for administrators who defy those policies. And then we can give you feedback on those policies. This district seems intent on corralling around administrators instead of serving and helping the students they've been entrusted to serve. We've outlined in our communications the way that Ed Code and your own parent-student handbook have been violated. And make no mistake, it's been happening all year. I filed complaints and I don't see how that led to any accountability. But now we're having kids suffer life-altering injuries being ignored by our administrator. What is the point of these documents if you don't hold people accountable to them? Students and administrators are acting out with impunity. A VP isn't going to magically solve this either. You can't coach someone compassion. How to treat people with respect and with dignity. If you haven't figured out after two years that you're supposed to email parents back about these kinds of claims, you can't coach that. For these reasons.
Our next public comment is Joanne Montgomery.
Good evening, members of the board and thank you for the opportunity for public comment. I'm here as a Mira Vista parent and a Contra Costa resident and I'm concerned with the way our school leadership and the district has responded. Rather not responded to serious concerns raised by parents, students and staff at our school over the last couple of years. From physical campus security like unlocked gates to fire safety to real threats of violence against students in our community. The safety issues that have been recently brought to light show that our site leadership. Is not equipped to handle school safety issues. And the district is unwilling or unable to intervene in a way that ensures the safety of staff and students. This is not the case of a limited but vocal group. The situations that have been detailed have impacted several families. Families who feel ignored in a time of crisis and at a time when they need the most support. These issues and many issues leading us to this point have been brought to the attention of the district and the board repeatedly, but nothing has been done. Teachers are leaving our school and the district because school leadership in the district's in action. We can't afford to lose good teachers. People have made homes in our community. It costs less to retain good people than it does to recruit them. We understand that this is a strenuous time now for all of us. But it's in a time like this that Mira Vista needs a strong leader who will embrace, respect and communicate with our community. We are left with piecing together stories from incomplete information. And frustrated with the lack of transparency around process and procedures for situations like this in the district. Any gun threat should be taken seriously and dealt with quickly and we need to show a zero tolerance policy to gun violence. We need a principal who will engage and show up to the most basic events like PTA meetings. We're calling on the district to hear and respond to us. We need clear action.
Our next public comment is Hulan Barnett.
My name is Hulan Barnett and I'm a father. I'm a husband and I'm a teacher. So we start off with what all these teachers are saying and community members. I have a hard time understanding how an election just took place a week ago and the very things that I stood for in my, in my solutions, nobody wanted it. And I talk about the Mira Vista East Hills of Richmond, Pino, I'm talking about El Sobrante, and I'm talking about Kensington. So it's hard for me to understand your complaints when we know for one, the choice that you made was gun violence. That's at El Cerito. We're talking about D'Anta. We're talking about no teachers being, a shortage of teachers being at Hercules High School where, where there are no teachers in English and math classes that, that parents brought to my attention as I ran for county supervisor. Not to mention bathrooms that aren't being cleaned, but they were cleaned when the county supervisor went there. And that's when I blew a head gasket because the bathrooms were clean that day. So let's, let's take it another, another level. But most of all, I want to say that you had a choice for solutions and you chose something different. So it's hard for me to understand what you want, but I do understand the body, that the people that I'm looking at here, they're in bed with the county supervisor being Mr. Phillips, oh, three, Ms. Reckler. I don't, and Demetrio, they voted for a vaccine mandate to basically threaten parents in keeping their kids at home unless they got vaccinated. And that's why I pulled my daughter out of this school district. So you guys can get mad at me. I don't really care how you feel about me because I'm gonna be here in your face, mister, when you run for mayor. We can, we can do a dance, whatever you want to call it. Demetrio, you came to my community. You know how I feel. You'll always notice and this is what you'll always get. And then teachers. I hope you have the courage to stand up to this group of individuals. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Alex Escalante.
Good evening. My name is Alex Escalante and I'm a father of two young children at Mira Vista Elementary. And I'm here representing the Latino community. I want to thank everyone who came today to support greater transparency around the process for investigating and resolving gun threats and violence on our campuses and the folks who came out to support all of our WCCUSD schools. Silence is not acceptable. Parents reporting gun threats, violence, and sexual harassment deserve a response from administration. They have a right to request a meeting with the principal. They have a right to have the process explained to them. It's been a hell of a year for everyone in education, but parents are partners in this too. We need to know what is the process for investigating gun threats on campus? What is supposed to happen after a gun threat has been made aware to administrators? Why does one school get healing circles and another school get silence? Why aren't policies being carried out consistently? What does accountability look like for enforcing district policies around gun threats and violence? We're here because for too long, our families have been ignored. But this is our community and we're here to show that this isn't acceptable. The district may call it gossip or rumors, but I see it differently. I see families shut out of the system, denied translation services with nowhere to turn, no one answering phone calls or emails about violence against their kids. They're looking for advocacy and allyship. These are the kids we've known since kindergarten, the families we sit next to at movie nights. It's our community. When a mother calls you and tells you how her child's eye socket was crushed by another student and then her emails to the principal were ignored, that's not rumors. That's not gossip. That's unacceptable. And I see you here, families lifting each other up, advocating for your communities and demanding answers. Thank you for showing up tonight and thank you for listening.
Our next public comment is Kimberly Chamberlain.
Good evening. Well, we made it to the end of the school year, skin of our teeth. As usual, we're still working. We're still going to keep pushing forward. I am hoping that everybody continues to heal and get a healthy start for the next school year. I'm hoping that everybody comes out and walks these campuses throughout the summer and looks at our summer school students that are trying their darndest to complete their school year and make sure that they have a step forward for the next year. Please, keep our advocacy for these kids to keep healing, the teachers to keep healing, and our staff to keep healing. I realize it is just summertime. People are looking at us going, oh, it's summer. You have the time off. You get out, school ended. No. If you know my department particularly, this is our busiest time. Of course, we haven't had a slow time in the last three years, but I will say this. My team, Empower School, Data, IT, we are consistently here for the kids and doing whatever we possibly can. I see this at all the school sites. I see this with all of my staff, all of the SSA members. And I am gratefully appreciative to each and every one of them for stepping forward and looking at the kids first. Please do the same and come out and support them and us. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Levy Shank.
I'm the parent of a rising fourth grader at Mira Vista. For the past two years, you've heard from me and other parents expressing dissatisfaction with our principal's inability to respond to emails. Answers from you varied from thank you for your email to we will look into this to nothing. Only recently have you agreed to meet with us and your response was she is very busy. If we are to believe this, here is a list of things that our principal is too busy to respond to. Parents saying that their children were threatened with guns. Another parent stating that her daughter was sexually harassed by a staff member. Another that her daughter was punched at school and had her skull broken in three places. Parents who requested IEP or SST meetings. Members of the LGBTQY+ and Allies Group who questioned why a promise to fly the progressive pride flag was not fulfilled and expressing concern that the sex ed curriculum was not inclusive of trans students. Our principal is too busy to provide translators at meetings when they are requested by the parents and to provide parents with documents that their children filled out while in private meetings with her. She is too busy to attend school functions or PTA meetings. She is too busy to reassure families whose children have been threatened with guns and investigation has been carried out and their children are safe. I and others can no longer accept that this is a matter of being too busy. All principals are busy. We refuse to believe this is how other principals treat members of their community. We are here to insist on a change in leadership. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Chris Quatero.
Hello, I am Chris Quatero. I am a parent of Ella Horst students. We're here to support Greg Whaling. Unfortunately, you know, the circumstances. I was actually there the night of the, the whole altercation or however you want to call it. Greg did not do anything wrong. He was trying to keep all of the students safe. And, you know, he's a very good guy. The community actually pushed for Greg to become our principal when we lost our principal. So overall, I mean, you know, we're here for Greg and we just want justice and things to be, the truth brought out. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Lindsay Quatero.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Quatero. I am a parent from Ella Horst Elementary School. And we are here to support Mr. Greg Whaling, our principal. I was also there during the sixth grade Ella Horst dance for our graduates. I was a chaperone as well as my husband. We were there to make sure that everyone was safe. We even asked for additional parents of certain students to attend the dance so that they would also ensure that nothing would happen. Unfortunately, that night took a turn for the worst. There was a group of kids there that continually disregarded the rules, went to the bathrooms in groups, which appeared to not be something that was going to be good. Chaperones, parents, and even faculty went to check on them to make sure nothing was being done. We tried to make sure that everything stayed safe and that was also the goal for Mr. Whaling. Mr. Whaling did his job as a principal to ensure that nothing happened. He came there that night, also his daughter in attendance of the dance. She is also a student. And he is a father, a great principal, and he was doing his job that night. We hope that these accusations are proven to be false because Mr. Greg Whaling has been a great principal with integrity, honesty, and he cares for his community. Thank you.
Our next public comment is John Corcoran.
Good evening, members of the board, President Christian, and members of the public. I'm John Corcoran. I'm here as a former Ella Horst parent, father, and friend. I'm here to speak in support of Ella Horst Principal Greg Whaling and against the outrageous claims made against him. As soon as we heard through social media and other Ella Horst parents what happened at the sixth grade dance, we knew that somehow facts were misconstrued or it was an intentionally false accusation to deflect attention off a student who appears by all accounts to have an extreme behavior problem, a problem I'm sure Greg has been trying diligently to fix. Greg's a really good guy, an awesome educator. My wife and I have known Greg and his family since our oldest kids were in preschool together. We were members of the Ella Horst Dads Club when he was just an Ella Horst dad. And despite my family having moved away, my kids and I still keep in touch with him and his family. We would completely entrust Mr. Whaling with our education, welfare, supervision, and even rearing of our kids. If my wife and I died tomorrow, we would know our kids would be in safe hands with Greg and his family. We wholeheartedly believe Greg is being sidelined for simply doing his job and holding a problem child accountable. Greg's never said or done anything in his personal or professional capacity to make me question his integrity, morals, or ethics. Once these allegations are proved to be untrue or unfounded, I ask the school board and superintendent this, what do you intend to do to the family or students who made these false and potentially lifelong damaging claims? Is there a board policy to address this? What do you intend to do about chronic bullying behavior? I'd also like to add that upon review of your form titled complaint, complaint concerning school personnel, blue form located on your website, there is no warning of repercussions for filing a false complaint. I suggest the board ask staff to research and consider adding such language to prevent frivolous and reckless complaints. And since I got a couple more seconds, it sounds like you guys really need SROs. Bad idea getting rid of them. Have a good night.
Our next public comment is Maria Allegria.
Good evening, Board Trustees. My name is Maria Allegria. I'm a resident of Pino, a taxpayer and supporter of adult education. I was shocked to learn of the termination of ASTU President Ken Ryan and Vice President Kirsten Persley, long-term adult education teachers, while attempting to negotiate in good faith with the district. This is not a clerical error, but blatant union busting. As trustees, you cannot allow this to happen on your watch. I am here to support the demands of ASTU. A fair contract now, four years to negotiate? We all know this is unacceptable. It's called bad faith negotiations, which is happening on your watch. To desist from harassing the ASTU negotiating team. Good faith negotiations allows for the team to choose their members. English as a second language, ESL. Bring ESL classes to the community schools. Most recently, I worked on a project, Boricete Amo Te Quelo. In partnership with County Health Services, we sponsored a health vaccine fair at Nystrom Elementary. Of the 144 people who came, sixty-six registrants indicated that they would attend an ESL citizenship class at Nystrom, their community school. COVID safety, why is the district refusing to implement recommended, recommended safety measures? And save the older adults program. ASTU is committed to advocating for older adults program in the face of state cuts to older adult funding. Finally, please instruct your staff to negotiate in good faith.
Our next public comment is Erica Cruzes de Savala.
Buenas tardes. De nuevo antes de empezar, la información está en inglés, está nada más en inglés y no en español.
She's gonna speak in Spanish, so she's gonna say it in Spanish and then I'm gonna translate in English. If you please wear your headphones when she's speaking, when I'm speaking.
Bueno, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Erica Cruzes. Hoy me encuentro enfrente ustedes con mucho respeto. Sin embargo, mis palabras van dirigidas al Superintendente Hearst y a todos ustedes. Nuestras palabras como padres son importantes, sin embargo, no han sido escuchadas. La escuela donde asiste mi hijo en la escuela Washington hoy, en donde contamos o más bien quise decir, contábamos con grandes maestros. Estas maravillosos cuidadores de niños que hacen lo mejor para que los estudiantes se sientan bien y en familia. Requerimos de una mejor dirección del personal a cargo que sepa y entienda el proceso, que sea líder comprensible, que sea un aguerrido en el programa dual. Requerimos apoyo a nuestros maestros, staff, con un ambiente laboral digno y respetuoso para no estar reclutando cada vez y cada vez a maestros bilingües porque no son valorados. Por último, nunca puedo permitir que alguien me diga del distrito y del personal del distrito que no debo y no puedo hablar enfrente de ustedes, expresar mis inquietudes e ideas para hablar por mis hijos, para hablar por mi comunidad y que nadie puede decirme a mí que no respeto a toda la comunidad y más siendo decolóptico. Son totalmente respetuosos para mí. Gracias. Pero que ya se me acabó el pie.
Okay. Good evening, Board members and staff. I'm here. I've been a volunteer for thirteen years in this district. I'm expressing these words with respect for Dr. Hearst. Our words as parents haven't, haven't been heard. My son attends Washington Elementary, where we used to have a wonderful staff that would make sure our children are safe and okay and they feel like they are in a family. We need a better administrator, a better leader that knows how to process and to embrace the dual immersion program. We need more support for our teachers and staff with bilingual teachers so that they can be respected and they have a good work environment. so that they can be respected and they have a good work environment. I'm not going to let anybody tell me that I cannot talk to you about my concerns and my feelings. And I'm always respecting everybody, all the students of Coilers. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Marlen Kanagi Muñoz.
Good evening. My name is Marlen Kanagi Muñoz. I am here as a concerned parent of a fourth grader, soon to be fifth grader, at Washington Elementary School. I'm also a psychologist and an educator, so I can appreciate the difficult job that you all have in leading our schools during these uncertain times, and I thank you for all that you do. I also want to thank Dr. Hurst for his recent stated support of Washington's DLI program. However, we can't have a DLI program without staff and teachers. We are experiencing mass attrition at Washington Elementary School. Students, staff, and teachers are leaving at alarming numbers. While I understand that this is happening at a national level, I want to bring to your attention that many families, staff, and teachers have publicly and privately noted current leadership at the school as a reason for leaving the school. At this time, I'm not sure if my student will have a teacher on the first day of school, much less a qualified bilingual teacher, as there are no returning fifth grade teachers for next year. Teachers are difficult to recruit, and securing bilingual teachers can be even more challenging. I'm here to request that an active plan to recruit qualified teachers, hopefully bilingual teachers, for Washington Elementary School be put in place immediately in order to recruit successfully over the summer. And I hope that this plan will be communicated to parents to avoid more parents pulling their children from our school. Further, I request that you continue to review parent and staff complaints about leadership at our school in order to prevent further teacher attrition and losing valuable teachers, new teachers, and families. At our school, we believe the future is bilingual, multilingual. Washington Elementary has been such a special place for my child to learn. I hope that you'll act quickly in order to save this bright spot in our district. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Catherine Leaks.
Hi, I'm Kathy Leaks. I'm a first grade teacher at Ella Horst. I'm here to support Greg Whaling. He's been our principal for four years. No one is perfect, but he has done the best that he can. He has made sure that our students are safe. He's made sure that they are welcome. And he's made sure that everything that he can do for our students, he has done. I don't know the ins and outs of what happened on that day. I do know that he is for our students. I do know that he cares about the students. And I know that this being put out the way it was was unfair to our community. And it casts a very bad spotlight on our school, period. Not to mention our principal, who will be found not... This is unfounded. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Kari Sunstrom.
Hello. So I stand before you today as a Mira Vista parent, as a community member, and a school social worker. And I'm asking for comprehensive homicide assessment and weapon screening when a student threatens to kill another student with a gun. I am asking for mental health support for those who make threats to harm others and for the students who are terrified to come to school as a result. And lastly, I'm asking for implementation of restorative justice practices with fidelity. This really means investing time and resources with consistent training and support. It cannot be done halfway. Our school community was close, and in the last couple of years, it's just come apart at the seams. And RJ will really help rebuild that sense of belonging, inclusivity for our students, where their social, emotional needs and learning can happen within circles. And it's with the sense of connection and a sense of community that when harm happens, relationships can be repaired. And this is not just bringing them into an office and having them fill out a worksheet. RJ cannot work if it's done in haste. It really requires slowing things down, where ample time is given to prepare all participants, the affected, the wrongdoers, as well as families have to be included. It's an integral part of healing. And given the recent events at Mira Vista, there has been no healing, only further harm at the hands of a principal who was there, who was too busy to help. So for this reason, the Mira Vista community demands a new school leadership and clear directives on evaluating gun threats and violent acts on campus.
Our next public comment is Karen Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Karen Hernandez. I'm a first grade teacher, as well as Ms. Leaks, at Ella Horst Elementary School. And I would rather get a tooth pulled than be here in a room full of people talking. However, I'm here to speak in support of my principal, our principal Greg Whaling. I think I speak on behalf of all of our staff and most of our community, if not all of our community. We're standing together tonight. Many of us have come tonight. We're speaking in support of Greg Whaling, who was treated very, very, very badly by a parent that chose to make up a story that wasn't true and spread that. What's disappointing to me is that I've been reading different emails, and that is that the superintendent, don't mean to be disrespectful, but the superintendent sent out an email, I believe it was the last day of school or the day before the last day of school, spreading it to everybody. And, you know, the Ella Horst community was just waking up the next morning and finding out what was going on. And then to have it spread to everybody was just so... It just ruined the last day of school for everyone. Everyone was either angry or upset, because we all know Greg. Greg is a man of integrity. He and his wife Cynthia, they have hearts of service for the community. And that's how they've lived their lives, serving the community. And they would do anything for anyone in need. And we've seen that at Ella Horst School. We've seen that in Greg. He, again, like one of the parents said, we had a position open as for a principal, and I've been teaching for over 30 years, and I've never seen this happen, but the community begged Greg to take the position, to apply for it. He did apply. He did get it. And we were thrilled when he took over as the principal. He's very well-loved. He's out there before school. He's out there after school, greeting everybody, talking to everybody. He's out there at every single recess. He goes to every single meeting there is, SST, IEP, everything. He cares about the students. He cares about...
Our next public comment is Kirsten Cohen.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst and school board members. My name is Kirsten Cohen. I'm a fifth grade teacher and parent at Ella Horst Elementary School. Tonight, I speak as a district teacher. I'm not here to talk just about Principal Whaling, but instead to talk about how you are going to protect your district employees. I'm here to talk about the next district employee who has to hold a student accountable, who has to discipline a student, and the parents get upset. Is there protocol for when an employee should be placed on leave and when they shouldn't? And where is that written? If we let students' parents make up allegations that cause a district to respond with an investigation, and weeks go by where the accused is placed on leave, their job is not being done. The school community is negatively affected. At what point do we hold parents accountable for the disruption they've caused just because they did not like the discipline that their child received? Will the district hold parents accountable for bullying, harassing, and making up lies against district employees for the time that has been wasted? Will the district stand up for its employees? The district has a vested interest in their employees feeling safe, and a lot of us do not feel safe right now. Dr. Hurst made this incident very public. Once the investigation is completed, there needs to be a very public exoneration of Principal Whaling. Dr. Hurst and the district need to hold families accountable, but in a way that other families with real complaints or concerns feel comfortable coming forward. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Colleen Valentine.
Hello, my name is Colleen Valentine. I currently sit on the United Teachers of Richmond Executive Board, representing special services. I also sit as a vice chair on the UTR bargaining team. I am also a teacher at Ella Horst. When allegations are made against a West Contra Costa Unified School District employee, they should be addressed in a professional and timely manner. As allegations are addressed and investigated, those involved should not be subjected to a West Contra Costa Unified School District staff and community-wide email. They should not be subjected to a trial by Instagram, Nextdoor, or any other social media platform. They should not be addressed or defamed in a trial on social media in any manner. I look forward to West Contra Costa Unified School District executing an effective, respective resolve to the issues at my site. I look forward to seeing further issues in West Contra Costa dealt with more respectfully, more effectively. I support Greg Whaling. I look forward to his return when he's exonerated. Do better by your students, do better by your staff, and do better by your community from now on. Side note: bargain effectively. What's happening with the adult school? What's happening in the unions? It just doesn't make sense to me. What's happening at my site doesn't make sense to me. This is not the stuff I've written down. This is the stuff I'm just feeling. I don't understand why our employees do not feel safer in the jobs that they've dedicated their lives to. Please respect those that are working for you, working with you, and participating with you. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Tia Lawson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a former parent from Ella Horst Elementary. I'm a highly-involved volunteer parent, and I'm here to support Mr. Greg Whaling because of the allegations that's made against him regarding this family. My daughter was a victim of this same family six months ago. She was threatened with a gun. We didn't have no support from the district. Basically, the student just got a pat on the back, and now here we are with a bigger situation. When is kids gonna be... When is the consequences gonna be made for kids in this situation? I'm concerned because now is a target. He's targeting different students. My daughter should always feel safe at school. I'm gonna keep advocating for her regardless of what it takes, because this family is just out of control. And when is the district gonna support the victims and stop supporting the perpetrators? And like I said, when this is... The district sent out a false email, it was as tasteful as misleading, because our community, we are a strong community, and we stand up for what's right. And what was... How this came about was totally wrong. I do want answers how we're gonna support people when they are effective in the victims. And I personally didn't get that. So I wish that the district will send a message out how they're gonna go about the protocol, because the protocol right now is not effective. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Mariessa Nate.
Good evening. I am a concerned parent from Ella Horst Elementary School. With the recent events surrounding our principal, I'm wondering what the steps or protocol is on parents that have used the system and that are also of the bullying nature. What are the steps to protect our children, staff, and teachers? Our school has many documented circumstances with this one child and family, and things have not been handled one bit. Because of that, the bullying continued, and our principal's reputation is being tarnished. There needs to be a clear outline of not only discipline for the student, but a strict follow-through. Parents and families as well should have a code of conduct that they are contractually required to follow, along with a clear outline and consequences for them. You know, my son, a few months ago, he's in fourth grade. He's 10. Another child did bring a knife to school and threaten him. He luckily was okay. It did take many weeks for this child to be expelled, but I think it's sad that because she brought... It got to the point where she brought a weapon to school, that that's when it got handled. You know, this boy has verbally threatened to bring a weapon to school and conflict harm on other children, and I think that should be taken just as seriously. So, thank you.
Our next public comment is Irish Stott.
Hello, my name is Irish Stott. I'm also a parent from the Ella Horst community. I am here in support of Greg Whaling as well. I've had a child at Ella Horst in the principal car and have seen the transition to Greg Whaling at our school and have had a very positive experience. I echo all of the parents from Ella Horst and the staff's sentiments and statements here tonight. I foremost am here as a representative and an advocate for my two children who are attending Ella Horst Elementary. I feel like they are going to be the ones that will be the most impacted by any decisions made regarding Ella Horst. And I feel that they also should have a voice in what is happening currently. I have just two short audio from my children, because as they would like to share their opinion on Principal Greg Whaling.
I am Leonita Stott, and I am a third grader. I like Mr. Whaling being my principal because he is very gentle with his words. He is very nice. He makes me feel safe at school. He says good morning to us, and he helps us get along.
Hi, my name is Kay Stott, and I'm in sixth grade. I think that Mr. Whaling is a very nice person, and he makes everyone in the school feel safe. Most people in the school like him as a principal, and when something happens, he does his best to help. I feel like I can talk to him about issues that come up. When I talk to him, he listens without interrupting and stays calm. I like having him as our principal.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is George Meskis.
Hi, my name is George Meskis. I'm the parent of a future first and third grader at Mira Vista. I originally came here because I was upset about the fact that my older daughter had to wait six months to receive a meeting regarding her IEP. It was just a result of delays and poor communication from the principal. But the communication about our administration is so poor that I consistently learn about new, greater issues from other parents: fire alarms being ignored, gun threats. And tonight, I learned that there was a student's eye socket that was damaged, and no information was ever given to me except for from other parents or from meetings. It isn't just Mira Vista, though. I did write an email to Dr. Hurst regarding these issues and concerns, and what I received was just a formal letter from him saying everything was handled appropriately and great. And when I went through this and spoke to other parents, it's my understanding that they asked for a translator, which was completely ignored. And I just wanted to hear from Dr. Hurst. If this is how we're supposed to handle things, are we just supposed to ignore parents' requests because we're all too busy? Is this the appropriate way that we handle things now? It's very frustrating that the communication is so poor at our school that... It's very frustrating that the communication is so poor at our school that we're just kind of giving up. I almost didn't come here tonight because it feels like nothing will change anyway. I hope you guys prove me wrong. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Glenn Rockman.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Rockman. I'm a parent of a West Contra Costa student. I was a West Contra Costa student myself. I graduated from Pinot Valley High School. I am currently a West Contra Costa teacher, and I was a member of the Ella Horst community. The Ella Horst community is one that should be admired throughout the district. The PTA and the Dads Club combined to make all kinds of great events happen at the school, things that don't happen at other schools. The community is very tight-knit, but they are welcoming of new members. Mr. Whaling was a member of the Dads Club and a friend of mine. You can see tonight how many teachers are here. There are all kinds of teachers from his school to support him. They don't necessarily agree with him with everything, like most people with their bosses, but they're here to support him tonight. He's been wrongly accused and should be, the charges should be dropped or whatever it is, and it should be public that the investigation happened, and this is what happened, and it's done. That's the kind of thing that should happen. That's what I had to say. As far as behaviors, I know this started with a student with behavior problems. We've had lots of behavior problems in the district. We have specific rules that don't seem to always be followed. We need to have the handbook where if you do this, this is what's going to happen to you. Restorative justice is great, except when it doesn't work. We need to help these kids because they come from situations where they don't get the love that they need, and teachers, we wanna love them. But we need your help to do that with behavioral problem kids. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Camille Salucci.
Hi, my name is Camille Salucci, and I'm a concerned and active parent from Washington Elementary. As you are aware, we are losing at least six teachers and all of our key staff and numerous families of all ethnicities and races due to Washington leadership. Leadership the board and the district put in place against the parents' and teachers' wishes. When we expressed our concerns last summer, sorry, just pausing for a quick second while people finish talking. Okay, when we, when we expressed our concerns last summer, the district said they would put support in place to ensure a successful outcome for Washington. The support was not put in place, and now a year later, that outcome is not successful. With the national teacher shortage, the fact that the district and Washington leadership did not do more to keep the bilingual teachers is unforgivable. The primary reason people are leaving is leadership. Leadership that received a 90% no confidence vote from the teachers. We have requested a plan of how teachers and staff will be secured. So far, the only plan we are aware of is to post positions. We can't even get a date as to when a plan will be available. Much more needs to be done if we were to start the year with teachers and staff. There is no time to waste. Only with a strong DLI program at Washington will the DLI programs at Korematsu and Washington, and Elsorito succeed. If this is indeed a top priority, please act. Just this morning, I was driving a second grader to camp. When I asked her about Washington, she said, I can't talk about it. I'm too upset. My teacher is leaving. Please listen to the teachers. Please listen to the parents. Please listen to the community. You have an opportunity to make Washington a shining star. Please don't let it die. Thank you. And thank you for all you do.
Our next public comment is Meg Pitts.
Good evening. My name is Meg Pitts, and I'm here as a member of the Miravista community, a community that is currently reeling from information coming to light regarding how various serious health and safety issues on campus are being handled by current school leadership. I believe that it should be considered criminal negligence in 2022 for WCCUSD to not have a clear-cut, zero-tolerance policy regarding threats to bring a gun to school and shoot people. And I call on this board and Superintendent Hurst to please ensure that this policy is created before schools reopen. A reasonable zero tolerance policy would include automatic removal from campus and a five-day suspension for any student that makes a threat to bring a gun to school, immediately reporting the threat to police so they can determine if the threat is credible. It should not and cannot be left up to principals to determine the credibility of a gun threat. They do not have the training or expertise needed in this area, and it should never be asked or allowed for principals to take on this task. We also need counseling service and ongoing support for all students involved, including some type of conflict mediation or restorative justice to ensure that the root cause of the threat is addressed. Children making these threats are crying for help. I just wanna say again that I believe that this board and Superintendent Hurst will be criminally negligent if you allow school doors to open again in August without a clear-cut, zero-tolerance policy for gun threats on campus. I also need to state my utter shock and dismay to learn that it is not currently written into California ed code that non-native speaking families are guaranteed translation services at meetings outside of IEPs. This is a glaring omission.
Our next public speaker is Joseph Glazer. Our next public speaker is Alon Harrison.
Hi, good. How y'all doing? I want to ask y'all a question. Don't start my time yet. Could I take one minute and the parent take one minute because we didn't know that they, that the parents had to sign up ahead of time? Okay, thank you. Okay. So my name is Alon Harrison, and I am the co-founder of the Black Parent Resource Center. And we're here this evening to share with you guys a lot of issues that we've been hearing in our community. And we're here sharing the voice of black parents tonight, and we want you to listen to what we're talking about. We have a lot of issues around safety. We have a lot of issues around not having adequate teachers at school sites, principals. We have an office of African-American student achievement with $1.4 million, and we are demanding this district tell, this board tell us, how are you gonna change outcomes for us? How are you gonna make things better next year for us? What are you gonna do to improve educational outcomes, parent involvement, resources at our school sites, and safety? What are you gonna do to make sure our children are reading? Our children have culturally well-rounded educators that know about our culture. Black people have a culture that's not being brought to the school district and not being recognized, and our office is not giving us the support we need at the fullest level like it should be. And we wanna know why isn't that happening? Is that y'all fault? Is that our fault? Our children are suffering. And so I'm gonna share my minute with mom. Go ahead.
My name is Jasmine Green. I'm a parent at King Elementary. I had three babies that go to that school. My son just graduated. I just found out yesterday that I'm the APAC leader for my kid's school, and I've been there for the whole school year, and I was never informed that. There's different things that could have been going on at that school in place for our kids that didn't even take in place. A lot of our kids didn't even have their fifth grade graduation or get their certificates the way that they were supposed to because Eli wasn't incorporated in that. Elak, I'm sorry. At the beginning of the school year, my daughter was assessed on something that she never even had any knowledge of, wasn't introduced to the material, anything. She still got her assessment, and her teacher made it known, not only to the principal, but to other staff members within the school that my daughter was on a first-grade reading level, and that wasn't even the case. I had to request multiple times to Ms. Sungberg for my daughter to be reassessed and given the proper material before she's assessed on the tech, on the material that she never was introduced to in the beginning with.
Ma'am, you. Our last public comment in person is Moira Beldy.
Hi, thank you. I'm a parent at Ella Horst Elementary to two students, and I've written lots and lots of emails. I care really deeply about public education in West Contra Costa in specific. And so I wanted to thank you guys for your service, and I appreciate the kind of generic, general apology we got. It was kind of danced around, so I wanna make it clear that on Wednesday I got that email, and I, along with all of the other parents at Ella Horst, assumed that children had been molested at our school. That was the natural assumption. And fortunately, I'm on the PTA, and I was able to reach out to families that I knew were there, and I was able to learn what had really happened. And so when I picked up, when, when we picked up our children on Wednesday, and my daughter told me that their principal had been arrested for spying on little girls in the bathroom at Ella Horst while they went to the bathroom, I was able to tell her that's not the case, and that was the last day of school. So when Mr. Whaling is cleared, we need a much more clear and specific explanation that the allegations were false, because even if he's returned to his position, there are families who are not as lucky to have the connections I have, who are right now thinking that the man they might walk onto campus and see was spying on little girls in the bathroom. And in a connection to, to issues brought up from other schools, this was the outcome of a child whose behavior needs were seriously unmet, who had several violent incidences at school, who threatened to shoot and kill other students, and who was at the dance with his family to ensure that nothing happened. And when they didn't take that responsibility, Mr. Whaling was attempting to do his job, and this is how he's repaid. We've heard about the teacher shortage, and in part, it's because teachers don't feel safe or supported in holding students and families accountable. Thank you.
Our first public speaker on Zoom is Joseph Glazer. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. So can you guys hear me? Because I tried before when I was called and I was muted.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So first, I support Mr. Whaling. He's a conscientious, great principal who should be back on duty. So I'm wondering why hasn't adult education been put on the board agenda yet? Former President Phillips didn't do that, and now President Christian, you're not doing it. Why not? I'd like an explanation for that because I think it's an important issue that needs to get dealt with. So I think the funding for the older adult program should continue. These are the people that are the grandparents and great-grandparents of our community members. They need to be treated with respect and honor as they deserve. We need to bring back the literacy classes for ESL students. Why were those cut? Leaders in the Adult Teachers Union have been off or reassigned, and that has been partially rescinded. However, Bob Mandel is still being given an in-person assignment, which it's very clear he can't do because of his own health issues and his wife's health issues. He needs to do Zoom classes, which his students are fine with. So what's the problem? Why is that not being done? The online classes, which were cut, should be restored. There is a place for online classes, especially for those with young children who can't attend in-person class, or perhaps those with health issues, with mobility issues, people in wheelchairs. There's all kinds of situations, so people deserve to have that option. We have virtual school for our K through 12 students, so why don't we have good online options for our adult students? So I've also heard that there's classes being cut at popular locations and then having classes at locations where people don't want them. So it's almost as if it's trying to show that there's low enrollment, so these can be cut later on. So please put the classes where they need to be. Four years negotiating with the adult school union or contract, what's going on? So they're going backwards and challenging the bargaining legitimacy, wasting time, union busting tactics. So we need a fair contract now, honest, good-faith negotiations. You're receiving an email from Jim Nevilleman on the great things these school, adult school teachers are doing, and the people being reached who won't be reached if everyone is forced to be in person.
Your comment?
Fair contract now for the adult school teachers. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Amy Aldrich. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
But I'm an adult school teacher. I teach the older adult fitness programs, which have been completely ignored. Over the while, we talk about other teachers doing wonderful things in our department, but often I have been ignored. Also, I don't know if I have a job again in September because the funding has been cut. I wanna read a quote from a book called A Return to Love by Mary Ann Williamson that talks about seniors. Here it goes, and I quote. "Part of our cultural neuroses has been an occurrence of age. Anything like anything else, age will only transform when we have first accepted it as it is. Many of us think age is so terrible, so unappealing, so unsexy, when actually, those are just thoughts we have. Walking down the street in Paris, French women in their 50s and 60s exude a mature sexuality. Here, we tend to hold the thought that women that age are over the hill. Let's change our minds. We can do that. Let's remember that the longer we live, the more we know. The more we know, the more beautiful we are. We can actively create a new context for the experience of aging by shifting our outlook towards older people in our society. The ego, after all, claims that a diminished body is a diminished person. We are a cold and uncaring culture in our treatment of older Americans. In China, elders are respected and revered, which is a large part of why the Chinese live so long as healthy, productive citizens. We have a thought in America that youth is better, and so it is, but not because that is an objective truth, only because it is a thought we carry and manifest as our collective experience. Thank you for listening."
Our next public comment is Francisco Ortiz. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hello, good evening, trustees, Dr. Harris, staff and community. My name is Francisco Ortiz, and I'm a district alumni and fifth-grade teacher at Ford Elementary. I'm also on release to serve as vice president and community schools organizer for United Teachers of Richmond. On behalf of the 1,500 educators of UTR, we stand in solidarity with the adult school teachers united. I implore district leadership to bargain in good faith and cease all union busting activities as it'll only strengthen solidarity and resolve. ASTU deserves a fair contract after five years of stalled negotiations. Our adult learners, who many have kids in our districts, deserve caring and passionate teachers who are dedicated decades to our district. How can we treat, or how you treat and value your adult learners and their teachers is a direct reflection on how you value younger students and their educators that support them. The district needs to immediately start harassing members of the AS2 bargaining team, firing the president and vice president of ASTU on the last day of school through email, claiming that they were temporary employees. To me, that does not seem like a clerical error at all, but a continuation of a pattern of disrespect and to but a continuation of a pattern of disrespect and intimidation. Bargain in good faith, support our adult learners and the passionate and caring teachers that they work with on a daily basis. Fair contract now. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Angela Silver Lima. Please unmute yourself.
My name is Angela Silver Lima. I'm a parent at Miravista. I have an rising fourth grader and a hopefully incoming kinder student. I am calling today to list the. I just wanted to lit, sorry, I'm not a hundred percent right now. I have a list here of qualities of a leader. They are integrity, accountability, empathy, humility, resilience, vision, influence, positivity. Our current administrator lacks not one single quality of those. She has no follow-through, no transparency, no lack of risk, lack of response to our safety concerns. She's unable to admit her mistakes. She throws people under the bus, including her own superiors. She's unable to unite our community post-COVID. We have teachers without classrooms. She offers no support to teachers. She cannot respond to us. We are asking for new leadership at our school. I listened to that audio recording of that little girl from Eller Horst and when she said, "Our principal engages with us, speaks to us gently and makes us feel safe at school." Not one single student at Miravista would say that about Ms. Betson. Not a single student would say that or feel that way. Most students did not even know who Ms. Betson was until halfway through the year. She does not engage with the students. We have walkathon fundraiser on campus, two dozen volunteers. She didn't even come down, participate, wave, do a dance or thank anyone for being there. We need new leadership and we need it now.
Our next public comment is Nora Ponse Calhoun. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Nora Ponse Calhoun. I am a parent of my son that is in kindergarten going to first at Washington Elementary School. I have actually filed several formal complaints in regards to not only going on at Washington, but the leadership, the root cause. Some of the issues regarding the school, for example, my son needing an SST and a 504 plan commenced that in November. As of the last day of school, I finally have a plan in place. It should not take my son eight months to acquire a plan in order for him to go ahead and have his fundamental rights garnered to him by the state of California in order to learn in a classroom. One of the other things that's an issue is at all of the transplants for our dueling version program that came from Spain. None of those teachers are actually going to stay at Washington Elementary School. Part of that had to do with resigning the contracts based on Miss Obadossier, the principal not doing it in a timely manner. How do we sustain a DLI program when we don't actually have the teachers to actually serve in its place? On top of that, threats of violence, gun violence and adult, I should not have to learn from other people that my son's kindergarten class was in a state of lockdown, children. And I was never told anything from the school, from the top person in that capacity in order to eliminate that information the way we should. I also, when there is a threat of gun violence, I should not be the first one reporting it to the district and to the police. That is the function of the principal. Nobody has held her accountable to the standard she needs to be held accountable to. You are losing students and staff at a huge amount at that school. That school used to have a waiting list to get into it. What is occurring within that school and why are you failing in order to make sure that there's accountability and support for Ms. Obadossier that's in place? Something needs to occur beyond what's occurring at the moment.
Our next public comment is Don Gosney. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening to you all. I hope you enjoyed the commencement season. Even when you have the overwhelming majority of the students where it's a foregone conclusion that they're going to graduate, it's still a time to be proud. I spent all day last Sunday down at Stanford watching yet another of our Ivy League Connection two-time scholarship recipients graduate. And the best part is that she walked away debt-free. That was an education that cost most, most students $332,000. Kamal Kumar is a Hercules graduate. Now she's a proud Stanford grad as well. Just a couple of months, she returns to the farm to earn her master's degree. Not that you need a reminder, since I bring this up frequently, but the main focus of my two minutes tonight is to bring up what I believe to be a need for enhanced outreach to the community about incidents and events at our schools and with the district. We're told that the main focus of the district's outreach is to, is to what is referred to as the school community. All too frequently, this means that the outreach is limited to the students, staff and the parents of current students. That takes care of maybe 30,000 adult persons in West County, but that leaves about 150,000 more adult residents that are left out of the outreach. We get to pay for these schools for the rest of our lives. Our schools are a huge factor in the value of our homes and our future neighbors may likely be graduates from our schools. Yet we're left out of the loop. We all have a stake in our schools. So maybe the district should consider extending their outreach. You've heard me speak about the lack of trust and faith in the district and the board that prevails. We are learning about the proposed $900 million price tag to rehabilitate Kennedy and Richmond High. Why are we learning about it? Why are we learning about incidents involving firearms in newspapers a week or more after the incidents? And why did we learn about the Marines being called in at El Cerrito High to perform security measures? And just a few days ago, we learned about an adult and a teenager that were snuck onto the El Cerrito High School campus on seven weeks earlier where they assaulted students in the restroom. And even tonight, we're just learning about multiple recent incidents at our elementary schools, not by the district, but by speakers calling in. Got a lot more to say, but been shut down now. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is George. Please state your name for the record and unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is George Persley. The last time I made a public comment, it was to have you do a thought experiment. What if your wife's principal had you come back to the office afterward, after the lockdown and didn't bother to take a five-minute drive to see whether you had a working phone, a computer, or even if there was a fire alarm installed? I assumed you would have been pretty upset. Here's a follow-up thought experiment. What if your wife, after working at the adult school for 25 years, having been teacher of the year, having pushed back to multiple attempts to destroy the school entirely by a succession of mostly grossly incompetent principals, only there to pad their retirements? After spending five years organizing the first adult school union in the history of the district and serving two terms as its president and having the best attended and successful ESL class during the pandemic, suddenly gets two separate emails laying her off when no other adult school teacher, other than the current president, president of the adult school union was to be laid off. Then it continued to consider how you would have felt if you had found out not only that her vice principal didn't know, but that the trustees of the school board were not consulted. Next, consider your responsive. After widespread public outcry, you were told that this was just a clerical error. Well, let's be very trusting and take at face value this egregiously unprofessional, insulting, condescending and unlawful answer. I would suggest a more fitting and consistent answer. I think the superintendent and board should get another clerk to accidentally on purpose lay her off. As I am told that she has been working in the district presumably as a clerk for decades. Make sure that this is, that makes sure that this is a prime candidate for a preemptive layoff. So please do the right thing and lay Sylvia Greenwood off and see if anybody cares. Who knows? You might get some positive feedback, which at this point I'm sure you agree would be welcome. My wife's layoff notice did not write itself. So Mr. Hurst, why don't you just green light this, say that you greenlit this, which was the most obvious explanation? In which case the board should dismiss you or admit that you have no idea who could possibly have written such a thing, in which case the board should dismiss you.
Our next public comment is Jose De Leon. Please unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, President Hurst. My name is Jose De Leon, President WCCAA. This year, more than anything else, was plagued with good, good things and bad things throughout the school year. I have to report that some of our high schools had a great number of students graduating. El Cerrito 400, Richmond High 345, the ends of over 230 students. And the diminished team working with the teachers and the staff is working very hard to plan a comeback for next year and looking at what the new normal is. We'll continue to work with our communities to make sure that we have the best programs for our students, not only in the classroom, but also supporting their mental health. The middle schools had great promotion ceremonies and so did the elementaries. And the elementary middle school teachers have been working with their administrators who are planning a more successful next year and a return to whatever the new normal is. But the focus is to be student-focused on academics, safety and also socially emotional support for all our students. There's a lot of work to be done. We are here to work together with our communities as administrators to create the best program for our students. So looking forward is, is the most important part of this summer. So I'd like to once again thank administrators, their communities, teachers and staff for surviving a difficult year with.
Our next public speaker is Linda Kane. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst and, and school board trustees. Thank you for taking my call. I'm Linda Kane of El Cerrito. I just want to express my concern about the firing of Ken Ryan and Kristen Persley. Kristen's a 25-year employee of the WCCUSD and a leading member of the ESL program. Kristen and Ken were laid off for no reason. It was, if it was an error, it seems like an extremely strange one. It appears that the reason that Kristen and Ken were laid off or fired, or Kristen even twice, they were, the president, they are the president and vice president of the adult teachers union and they're trying to fight for better working conditions for the adult teachers so that they can do a good job for the students, the adult students in WCCUSD. I support adult learning and adult teachers at WCCUSD. Teachers need contracts to do their jobs effectively. I'm also a participant at the learning program at St. John Senior Center and I urge you to hire a new teacher for fall and work on getting Measure X funding to keep our program going. It's very important to a lot of seniors who may not be energetic enough, strong enough to be here tonight, but it's important to them and it's important to me. Thank you very much and good luck with all the problems.
Our last public speaker for the night is John Sabala. Please unmute yourself. Hello?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I apologize. Good evening. My name is John Zabala, school psychologist and president-elect of the United Teachers of Richmond. I'm speaking tonight in support of ASTU. For the past three years, all teachers, including our adult teachers, have worked hard to meet the needs of students here in West Contra Costa. Our adult school teachers are in need of a contract now. And it is shameful that after all this time and hard work they've put into the community, they have not been rewarded and this has not been accomplished. Adult school teachers are vital resources in our community, providing recreation, English language classes and GD classes. These classes, no, these teachers are vital resources that make our community a better place to live. Finally, I want to speak personally to the recent firing of Ken Ryan and Kristen Persley, president and vice president of the New Union. Dr. Hurst, I want to say I appreciate your public apology earlier. I appreciate your willingness for an independent investigation. We need to show good faith in order to establish trust between management and labor. This public recognition is a first step. However, the next step is giving these teachers a fair contract. UTR supports our colleague teachers at ASTU and looks forward to the conclusion of their contract negotiations. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Our next speaker is Maria Alcaraz.
Please wear your, wear your hair headset, headsets. Hola, mi nombre es Maria Alcaraz. Hello. My name is Maria Alcaraz. Soy la mamá de la estudiante que fue golpeada en la cara. Que parte de su cara fue rota. Y traté de comunicarme con la principal de la escuela, con el superintendente. Y el superintendente nunca contestó mis emails. Fui personalmente y no me recibió tampoco. Con dos secretarias y pidiendo una asistente personal y no es capaz de recibir a un padre para que explique por qué un niño dentro del salón tiene que ser golpeado severamente. Que terminó en el hospital con cirugía reconstructiva en su cara. La directora que tenemos en la escuela no es capaz de mantener a los niños seguros. Y yo quisiera hacer una pregunta directa al superintendente que hasta hoy en día no sé quién es, no sé cuál de todas las personas que están aquí es el superintendente. Okay, mucho gusto. Y espero que pueda recibirme algún día y me pueda explicar qué es lo que está haciendo al respecto de todo lo que está ocurriendo en las escuelas. Quiero respuestas a lo que sucedió con mi niña. Y quiero que la directora me diga qué fue lo que hizo con el niño, qué le hizo eso a mi hija. También quiero que se haga algo para que eso no vuelva a suceder con ningún niño y que ninguna mamá tenga que llegar a recoger a su hija a la escuela y le encuentre las condiciones que yo encontré a mi hija. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
That concludes our public comment. That concludes our public comment.
At this time, we're gonna take the uh fifteen-minute break and then we'll reconvene shortly. Eight forty-five. Uh called a meeting back to order and we will proceed on uh with the agenda. Um we just finished up public comment and I just want to thank everyone. Who participated in public comment this evening, thank you and your voices was heard and we heard your voices. And now we will move on with the agenda and we want to try to, you know, stay on a. Good timely manner as much as possible and um. So here we go, um we don't be for. We have to do some resolutions. Proving the resolutions, so uh we got two. Uh proving a resolution number eighty. Seven dash two one, three, three, LGBTQ pride month. And as well as Juneeenth, so it's two resolutions and so. Okay, student trustee.
West Contra Costa Unified School District Resolution Number Eight Seven Two One Two Two. LGBTQ plus Pride Month, June two thousand twenty-two. Now therefore be resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education declares the month of June as Pride Month. And be a further resolve the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education. And directs the superintendent and all district staff to support lessons and activities that engage students in meaningful learning, research and writing about our LGBTQ plus students and families.
All right, a motion for um for the first resolution?
President Christian, I'll move that we approve resolution number eighty-seven twenty-one twenty-two LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
All right, it's been moved by uh Clerk Gonzalez Hoy, uh is there a second? All right, it's been second by record. And in the comments. I don't see no comment.
Christian, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I think it's um important that we not only recognize June for LGBTQ plus, but we recognize every month. And that this Soviet resolve goes in place for every month. Because like we all know, we graduate in June and school ends in June, so we want to make sure that those lessons, activities, recognition happens throughout the entire school year and beyond, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, all right. Are there any other comments? If not, then we'll go to the vote. All right, we'll start off, Leon, the end.
Leon, yes.
All right, thank you. And. Clerk does, oh trustee Rettler, I'm sorry.
Rettler, yes.
All right, uh trustee Smith falls.
Smith falls, yes.
All right, thank you. Uh trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, uh clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Thank you. And myself is a yes, and it carries and now we go to the next resolution. You got that with Leon?
West Contra Costa Unified School District Resolution Number Eight Eight Two One Two Two, Juneteenth, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education does hereby recognize. June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two as Juneteenth, a day of celebration of the past, present and future of Black resilience, culture and liberation.
All right, thank you, and now um. Go ahead.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Smith falls second.
All right, it's moved by uh trustee Phillips, second by uh Smith Falls. Are there any comments? All right, and we go to the vote. All right, start off with student trustee Leo.
Leon, yes.
Thank you, uh trustee uh Rettler.
Rettler, yes.
Thank you, uh trustee uh Smith Fall.
Smith Falls, yes.
All right, thank you, uh trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Thank you, and clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Thank you, and myself is yes. And it carries and we move on to the next agenda. And that will be the agenda review and adoption. Uh go ahead.
Thank you, I would like to move F, all the discussion items, one, two. And three before the action items E. No, I move, sorry, I move.
You said F two?
I'm sorry, I I move that all discussion items F one, two and three move up to before the action items E.
Is Derek second?
I'll second.
All right. And are there any questions?
I have a question.
Uh go ahead.
Dr. Hurst, are any of the action items have to be done tonight? Are time sensitive or any action items time sensitive?
Yes, we did check with our team, all of the items that we have on the agenda this evening are time sensitive.
Okay, is it, is it your suggestion that we keep the agenda in the order so we can make sure that we get to the action items? Is that your suggestion or are you okay with moving F up?
Yes, I'm I'm definitely fine with the uh the motion now.
Thank you.
Trustee Phillips.
Um this is a question, so item F three. Early literacy support block grant update, does that have to take place tonight?
Yes, sir, it does.
The update has to take place?
Yes, I did a screen of staff um prior, we did move items off. Of the agenda that we absolutely could move to the the twenty-ninth. The items that are on this meeting and checking with staff, they have to be uh on this, on this meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, now we go to the vote of uh the agenda. All right, uh start off with uh Leon, let's do it, Leon.
Leon, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Rettler.
Rettler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Smith Fall.
Smith Falls, yes.
Thank you. Uh trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, uh clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
All right, thank you, and myself a yes, all right. Now we uh move on. Anything else on the agenda to be moved?
President Christian, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with uh the cha- the changes.
Okay, all right, it's been moved. My clerk Gonzalez Hoy, is there a second?
Rettler, second.
Rettler, second. And now to the vote. Leon?
Leon, yes.
Thank you, uh trustee Rettler.
Rettler, yeah.
Trustee Smith Fall.
Smith Falls, yes.
Uh trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
All right, uh clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
All right, thank you, and I'm a yes. All right, so that carries and now we move on to the next. Item. Will be the approval of minutes of the March the second twenty-twenty-two.
I'd like to move uh approval of the March second twenty-two, twenty-two minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by trustee Rettler, second by clerk Gonzalez Hoy. And are there any questions or comments? All right, we go to the vote. Uh student trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Thank you. Uh trustee Rettler.
Rettler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Smith Fall.
Smith Falls, yes.
Thank you, uh tr- trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Thank you. And clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Thank you, and myself a yes. All right, the minutes have been approved. And now we go to. See business consent items.
President Christian, I move that we approve the consent items.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All right, it's been second and now we go to the vote. Student trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Thank you, uh trustee Rettler.
Rettler, no.
Okay, thank you, and trustee Smith Fall.
Smith Falls, yes.
All right, thank you, uh trustee uh Phillips.
Can you come back to me, sir?
All right, uh clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
All right. Uh trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
That's it, and myself, and yes. And it passes four to one. All right, and now. We going to superintendent report, Dr. Hurst, you on?
Thank you very much, sir, we're gonna ask if we could bring up the presentation, please. It was short, uh superintendent report, uh however, we have uh some guests here. That we're yielding that time to, so if we can go to the next slide. We wanted to start off with um a memorial, uh community member who has passed away, um next slide, please. We wanted to take the time to recognize school site safety specialist supervisor who's from Hercules High School. Mister Gerald Montgomery, also known as Coach G and Mister Hercules, uh who passed away. Coach G worked for the district for over seventeen years. Coach G was a beloved member of Hercules community. And his loss is a huge blow to everyone who knew him. Coach G was so much more than a coach and a safety specialist supervisor at Hercules High School. He was Mister Hercules for the seventeen years he worked at Hercules High. Doing things like hosting barbecues for students and staff. Always looking out for everyone else. He was an important role model for so many students. But especially Hercules student athletes, checking on their grades. Staying on their case to be the best they could be. Our thoughts go out to the family and friends and the loss of their loved one. A memorial service will be held this Friday, June seventeenth to seven PM. On the Hercules High Football Field and the service is open to the public. Thank you, and next slide. We also want to take the opportunity to um go back to the March fifteenth letter that was shared. Uh with our board and the public as well, and I'll read it in part on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Contra Costa County Office of Education Superintendent Schools Lynn Mackey sent a letter stating in part. The Contra Costa County Superintendent of School. Schools hereby notifies the West Contra Costa Unified School District Governing Board. That it is no longer a going concern, also known as a lack of going concern. That means the West Contra Costa Unified School District is no longer physically healthy. And is unable to meet its financial obligations. This determination is based on a negative certification of the district's first interim report. And the subsequent information provided to the governing board at the public meetings held on March second, twenty twenty-two and March ninth, twenty twenty-two. Indicating the district will be unable to meet its financial obligations. And run out of cash during the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. So that was a statement that actually was taken out of that March fifteenth letter. And also in that letter says to help the district address its financial problems. WCC USD was assigned a financial advisor. To assist in providing high-level expertise for finance and systems improve improvement. We have the financial advisor here this evening uh with us, her name is Javetta Cleveland. And I want to yield the floor to her just to introduce herself.
Yes, um good evening, President Christian, Board of Trustees Superintendent Hurst, Community and State. It is my pleasure to serve as the appointed fiscal advisor on behalf of the Contra Costa County Superintendent of Schools. I spent my early years in Richmond, um I am a product of the Richmond School District, I attended Stige and um Portola Middle School. That was one of the things that really interested me about being the fiscal advisor, um I have family in the area as well. Um I have over thirty-five years of um experience in school finance. I um have a lot of passion around good financial management because it allows districts and the board to really. Put in better programs and services for students when a district is financially stable. I've held positions as Deputy Superintendent of Business Services and Associate Superintendent and District. Uh this uh district director of fiscal services for various public school districts, including Berkeley Unified School District where. I was there for a decade and took, got Berkeley through the recession with a positive certification on their budgets. Most recently, I just retired from the Thomash Unified School District after a five-year stint as Deputy Superintendent of Business there. Prior to working for Berkeley Unified, um as a chief business officer, I was able to help two districts. Um insisted them in exiting state receivership where they had been taken over by the state. Um due to fiscal um insolvency, that was both Compton Unified School District and Oakland Unified School District. Early in my career, I did work for the State Controller's Office, um auditing school districts um that were in state receivership. One of those school districts was actually West Contra Costa Unified School District, so going back all the way to nineteen ninety-one. I was actually a part of the um external audit team that audited um on West Contra Costa School District for several years. As fiscal advisor, I'm here to provide obviously oversight. But to also provide um support and assistance to the district's fiscal recovery. I hope that my experience and expertise will assist the district in navigating through the fiscal recovery process. And I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cleveland, we appreciate your presence. I also wanted to take the opportunity to yield some of my time to. I also wanted to take the opportunity to yield some more time to Mister Kevin Gordon and Ivan Carrillo. They were capital advisors, and they will be uh sharing an update with the board as well.
Great. Thank you, uh, President Christian, trustees and Superintendent Hurst. It's good to be with you tonight. Um, I wanted to start, I'm gonna have uh Ivan tell you a little bit about. The the latest developments that just just happened this week on the budget. This is really a pivotal time relative to what's going on with the state budget, and it definitely is going to be impacting all the numbers going forward. That you're gonna be dealing with relative to a number of the demands that you guys have fiscally. It's gonna help hopefully Javetta's. The job that Javetta's got ahead of her in assisting the district and you as a governing board, but I wanted to start first start by. Saying that you guys know, and I've talked to this board before about the fact that you are not alone. Relative to relative to the issue of the challenges with regard to systemic imbalances in the base part of your budget. For the purposes of, you know, our audience across the community. It's important for them to know that school districts over the last decade. And particularly in the last couple of years, when we've gotten extra money from the state. A huge amount of that money has either been one-time and very restricted. Or it's been ongoing, but very restricted. And what I mean by that is that the legislature will say. We're gonna give you money for a very specific thing, and we want you to do that, but you can't use it to help balance your budget. It's just a major problem, and it's a problem that districts have had, and there's been a lot of advocacy around this. And if you looked at the governor's budget that he proposed in January, he had again billions of dollars of one-time funding that was restricted. Billions of dollars of ongoing money that was restricted, and the only thing that he dedicated. To ongoing base funding in a school district was a five point three-three percent cola. And although that seems a little bit bigger than normal. The expenditure of funds to pay for that compared to the billions and the rest of the budget, it just was completely out of balance. So one of the things that we've talked to you guys about, and we've really helped articulate to the legislature. And we're fortunate that Nancy Skinner is our senator because she's the chair of the full budget committee in the state senate. Um, and she heard us. The legislature ended up putting a budget that is dramatically higher in the amount of money it would put into the base. And while there are a lot of different stakeholders in our community who want to say in how that money, if we end up with those dollars. Would want that allocated. First and foremost, the obligation of making sure that we pay attention to the things that will create stability. In the general fund of the budget. But it doesn't mean that there isn't enough money to do other kinds of things, including engaging in a robust conversation. With our employee groups, and you've heard a little bit from them earlier tonight. So we should be able to do multiple things, but the most important thing. Honestly, you'll be doing even employees a favor if we create stability in that base funding. Because repetitive years of fiscal imbalance, repetitive years of the need under the law to do layoff notices and other things. That employees end up being, you know, on the, you know, pointy end of the stick relative to bad fiscal conditions. If we can resolve some of those issues in the base and the stability of the district. Understanding that they may not be giving us money to help the big mandates that they have for stirs and purrs. They may not be giving us full funding for the school transportation mandates or in this budget. They may not be paying attention to a number of key things that will cost us dollars. That we've got to pay attention to those fundamental things. And then obviously, I do think with the magnitude of money they're talking about in the base, we should be able to pay attention. To a number of the other needs that this district has that people have spoken to earlier tonight. So I wanted to start with that. And then I wanted, Ivan, why don't you talk a little bit about what the developments were this week? And then I'll end the conversation with telling you where the differences are between the governor and the legislature, but the legislature did act this way.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. Um, yeah, just 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 big picture, and then and then I'll level set in terms of timing and 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 where we're at. Uh, as as Kevin alluded to, we see a lot of. A responsiveness and and what the governor put in his May revision, as well as what we've seen in the legislature's package. To calls that we've heard from the field and and calls that we've specifically heard uh for from your district. Um, and so we we've seen that around uh declining enrollment protections, uh, broad discretionary funds and being amounts going out. Um, attendance relief for the current year we saw built into the May revision. And these things don't happen by chance. The the these things happen because of of steadfast collective advocacy and beating the drum about the need for these things. So just wanna. Um, commend the district for prioritizing engagement in that process with your local representatives, because it does make a difference. But in terms of timing, we we talk about June fifteenth a lot, and then that's a date that we all have marked on our calendar. But it's come to represent something a little different uh as of last year than 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 um than what it was expected to mean. And so there is a constitutional deadline. That the legislature has to a adopt a budget uh of June fifteenth. And then back in in twenty-ten, uh, the voters. Um, put in another level of accountability by saying the legislature. Won't be paid if there isn't a a budget that's adopted by that time. Because you'll recall budgets would often go months beyond that deadline before they were adopted uh prior to that twenty-ten. Uh, but what we saw last year and what we're seeing again this year. I- i- is a loophole and 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 for lack of a better word, where the legislature is able to pass. Its framework. And fulfill its constitutional duty. But one that doesn't reflect uh uh an agreement between both houses of the legislature and and the governor. So they met on Monday, uh, both houses of the legislature and did just that. They have a legislative package in which the two houses have come to an agreement. And 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 are are sticking their staking their flag in the ground in terms of where they're gonna start negotiations with the governor. But there is, we we know just from conversations and intel we're gathering. Um, that there's still quite a distance in in a number of issues. Um, uh, education related and non-education related. That need to be negotiated and need to be settled between the legislature legislature and and the governor. And we're some weeks out, uh, uh, we're likely. Um, to not see some of these uh things that we're talking about here in terms of the specifics on the education side. Um, many, many of them, we probably won't see until the end of the month. Um, some of them we we uh may not even see until beyond that point. Um, so so again, we're gonna talk through uh briefly just to some of the details of these big ticket items, uh, ones that we know are are really. Uh, of importance and and meaningful to the district. Um, but Kevin, I'll hand it back to you and then I'm gonna jump in.
Great, and then if there's something like this, uh, go ahead and and mention it. And again, we're trying to. Keep this pretty short, but give you a lot of good information, given the fact that you guys have a long agenda today, and we'll certainly be interested in having any questions if there's time. And President Christian, if you want us to, but the key issues, and there's really just a couple of them that we are really gonna watch carefully. One is this budget that was passed by the legislature. Does not have one of the components the governor had included in his January budget. The and he included it actually in his May revision. That we want in a final budget. And that is in addition to changing the way we get relief for declining enrollment, and we need it in this district. The the way we've gotten relief before has been very superficial. You either get the current year you're in or the prior year, whichever is more. That is a sort of a cliff effect in a way, especially given the kind of decline that we've seen. What the governor and legislative leaders have agreed on is a three-year rolling average that we could opt for. But what we really need beyond that, we need one extra piece beyond that. Which is for them to give us some relief in the current year. Because there's been such a drop-off in the current year. That if you give us a three-year rolling average, but the current year is really bad. It it messes up. Really undermines the benefit of that three-year rolling average. So we've got to get that current year fixed. We're really making that appeal. The superintendents met with the senators' staff and key people in the legislature to help articulate that objective from the district standpoint. That's gonna be a really critical issue. We're glad it is as of yesterday, it looks like. The entire Ed Coalition, that means management and labor are together on this issue and lobbying shoulder to shoulder to try to get that into a final agreement, but that's gonna be really, really important. The second piece is that big increase in base funding so we can stabilize overall funding, and I'm optimistic because. The worst we will do is the governor's proposal at May revision, because he actually has the most conservative viewpoint at about a ten percent change to L C F F base funding. But the legislature is all the way at sixteen percent. We're hoping that we get closer to where the legislature is and then where the governor's at, and there'll be an effort to get there. I'm not so sure we're gonna get to sixteen percent. But we're gonna do our level best to try to get as big a number of we get. We've called on the legislature and the governor. To we welcome a contest of who loves us most when it comes to base funding, so we're working on that issue, and hopefully it'll be a good outcome. The other major issue that's really contentious, and it's become really an issue that's emerged only in the last couple of months, is about transportation funding. We love the fact that people in the Capitol building have finally figured out there's a relationship to how well our kids do and stay in school and show up. And us actually paying money for a system that's adequate on school transportation that gets our kids to school. The problem is, is the Senate's version of the budget. Has big mandates in it that come with some funding, but not enough funding to cover what we think the out-year mandates are. And one of the things that's plagued our district here. Is the challenge of requirements that state keeps loading on us. Without the money to actually pay for some of those mandates. It truly is the essence of what's undermined so much of the fiscal stability of the district over time. So the transportation thing's got to get fixed. There is an alternative that the chairman of the Assembly Education Committee has, Patrick O'Donnell. That is realizing the imperative to do a lot more with school transportation, but actually funding that commitment over time. So we're pushing on all three of these key issues. And the last thing I wanted to mention is something that's really important to West Contra Costa, and that is. We we need to find a change to the metric that defines kids in poverty. And we have in the district a huge number, a huge percentage of kids that we consider unduplicated count kids that generates extra funding. But it's it's tied to the eligibility for the free and reduced school lunch program. Well, we know that because we've done universal feeding of school meals, that we've had a proportional decrease in the number of parents filling out that paperwork. So we want them to move to something else, and frankly, the idea that they have the the legislature put in their budget that we're hoping the governor will embrace. Is simply setting it at two hundred and fifty percent of the poverty level. And if we do change that, it actually casts a broader net. Of students that would be brought into that higher level of funding, which would be a good thing for our district. It would be significant dollars and also create greater equity. For the working poor. Because that index for free and reduced lunch is a federal index, doesn't take into account the high cost of living that we have in California. So that other index could be a really positive thing, and we're looking for that to happen. So I don't want to take anymore. There's a lot of issues, but I wanted to hit on those key issues. That we're gonna be watching over in the next few weeks, and we're happy to come back when the budget act gets adopted to let you know how things ended up. Settling out and what the implications are for the district. And with that, Mr. Superintendent, we're happy to take any questions.
Kevin, or or President Christian, if I may, just really quickly on a couple items that that I know are of importance to the district and. So Kevin mentioned it early on about pension relief, stirs and purrs relief. Um, so we we don't see that built into either the legislature or the governor's budget proposals. And so what we're what we're hearing from them and what we're seeing. Is them looking to provide uh 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 a sizable amount of one-time funding. To districts. And need to be about fifteen hundred dollars per per pupil. Um, that that will go out. And there, and these are gonna be, the governor's proposing that these dollars be fully discretionary. The legislature has some spending restrictions, but but with that said, it's still it's still relatively. Broad and it's the spending flex of uh spending um allowances as well. They're talking about allowing for a seven-year period in which these dollars can be spent. And they're pointing to that one time. Uh, um, whether it's discretionary or or broad uses for it. As a pot that uh school districts across the state could utilize. Um, i- i- if if they choose to be able to buy down pension relief. So didn't want to point out to that. We're still working between with a broad collective uh uh um. Organizations on the management side, labor, everybody's unified in this and and hoping that we can get some general fund buydown. Uh, but it looks like again that that's the the source that they're gonna point to and say districts, you you should be look into that funding source. To buy down your rates if that's what you choose to do with it. And then one other thing I just want to flag is, given the timing of of when this budget is gonna be adopted and and ultimately signed. You're gonna have to act really quickly in some respects, uh, in on some programs, specifically one of which is independent study. Where you're gonna, you're gonna have to, if you're operating an independent study program. Update your your board. Um, your board actions that reflect the requirements of 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 state law with with respect to independent study, because there there are some changes that are being proposed. Related related to tiered re-engagement. Um, related to uh when contracts have to be collected by signed contracts from the families. So again, these are things that are gonna have to be built into those contracts, and the language will have to be reflected in terms of what's a state law. Um, so again, that's something that you're gonna just want to keep top of mind. We'll we'll make sure and and communicate all that information to Dr. Hurst as well and staff. Um, to make sure you have all the relevant information, but that's one of these program areas that that districts across the state are gonna have to act really quickly on. If they're operating independent study programs.
And then. And and finally, Dr. Hurst, I wanted to just end by just mentioning that. You guys are in a unique position because there are not many districts that have. Sitting in the C B O's chair, and I know it's on an interim basis right now, but Robert McIntyre, who has done a lot of the same work we've done. But he's also been in districts, so he's gonna be uniquely. Really sensitive and aware of all of these developments to position you guys as optimally as possible to draw down. The maximum amount of money that comes from the different pots. So I wanted to mention that, and then of course. With Javetta coming on board as a fiscal advisor from the county, the combination of those resources, and we've worked with both of them. And it's an honor and a pleasure to work with them. I think you've got probably the best equipped staff you guys have had for a long time. To position you guys really well for what will be hopefully recommendations for a good trajectory going forward. In a budget that will probably be one of the best budgets we've seen. Probably in a few decades, if not for, you know, for for awfully long time.
Thank you so much. And we're turning back over to you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hurst, uh. Are there? Okay. Any question? All right, thank you, and now we're. Move to.
President Christian, I have a point of information.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this not the time for the student to give the student report, Dr. Hurst? Was he not supposed to be in your student, in your superintendent's report?
Thank you for asking, uh, trustee Smithfold. I did meet with uh the student trustee, uh, Lewing. And uh, we do not have a presentation from the students uh this evening. He just shared with that with me earlier on. So we're gonna forego that for this evening.
Thank you, President Christian. Now I have a point of uh privilege. May I say something um on the behalf of the Hercules Community about Coach G?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I wanted to let everyone know that it was a great loss to the Hercules Community, um, the passing of Coach Gerald Montgomery. Coach Montgomery was. The epitome of everything that we ask adults to be when they are dealing with students and teachers and staff and parents. It is a great loss. He um will always be remembered as someone who loved. The students, loved the student athletes, and loved the teachers and the staff at Hercules High School. He also had uh has a wonderful son that works at Hercules Middle School, and he has grandchildren that attend both the middle school and the high school. We want to rally around the family and ensure that their grandfather's. Legacy and their father's legacy will always be remembered at Hercules High School. Whatever you can do to make sure that you value people when they're still here. It's something that needs to be a district goal. It needs to be an individual goal of all of us, but it needs to be a district goal that we value the people who choose to give their life to this job. And then to the service of our students and our teachers and our staff. Thank you, Coach Montgomery, and you will be greatly missed. Thank you, President Christian, for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. And now. We go to. Item F1. Local control accountability.
Good evening, Board, Community, Parents. I am going to be, um, presenting our. Doing our public hearing for our local control accountability plan and supplement to the annual update for 2122. Dr. McIntyre will also be a part of the presentation towards the end of the slide deck. Next slide. So there are two components to the LCAP for review, the supplement to the annual update for 2122 LCAP, which. Focuses on a one-time report on use and impact of state and federal COVID-19 pandemic funds. Engagement of educational partners and use of funds not included in LCAP. And then the other part is the actual local control and accountability plan or LCAP. In the LCAP, we actually, the, the plan describes annual objectives, actions and services to improve outcomes. The focus of LCAP is on specific subgroups, low-income foster youth and our English learners. Next slide, please. Currently, our guiding principles for all LCAP-related documents are, are current, are guided by our current mission and our equity statement. Next slide, please. There are three district goals that guide the planning. These are our current goals. However, through the strategic planning process, this will change. But currently, these are the goals that are in place, which are under achieving students. To deepen the implementation of quality learning, teaching and leadership practices in our classrooms at schools. Thriving employees, maintain talented staff through compensation, supportive conditions and quality and personalized professional learning. And caring schools, create wonderful school and district cultures. Predicated on positivity, trust, inclusion, safety and communication. Next slide, please. The supplement to the annual update to the 2122 local account, control and accountability plan. Provides information about engagement of educational partners and use of funds not in LCAP, including COVID-19 funds. For example, regular ongoing meetings with our educational partners. Provides information about additional concentration funds as identified across the district designated to support English learners. Foster youth and low-income students. It also provides information about the implementation of S R three funds and description of effectiveness. West Contra Costa Unified School District expects to begin full, full implementation of fall of 2022. Next slide, please. The basics of the local control and accountability plan are CDE updated and streamlined LCAP template for 2122. We are currently in year two of a three-year plan. The template that we use allows districts to provide updates to expenditures and progress toward meeting metrics within the LCAP in subsequent years. The LCAP must include focus on subgroups, unduplicated pupils, for example, low-income English learner and foster youth. West Contra Costa Unified School District LCAP also identifies specific focus on African-American and special ed students. Next slide, please. LCAP structure and content. Section one is a plan and summary, which provides general information about West Contra Costa. Section two is reflection, successes and identified needs. Section three is our plan summary and LCAP highlights. Next slide, please. Section four is our comprehensive support and improvement. Section, section five includes educational partners involvement in the LCAP. Next slide, please. Section six is our goals, um, around, there are different sections on the goals. The first being how we monitor. Our success. And some of the goals are around basic services, implementation of state academic standards, parental involvement and family engagement. Student achievement, student engagement, school climate, access to broad course of study and outcomes in a bar. Broad course of study. And the template is set up to list metrics, use each, to monitor each priority area with a three-year growth target. At the end of each year, West Contra Costa Unified School District reports on outcomes for each metric with a lens on identified three-year growth target. Outcomes for the 2122, 2122 have now been included in LCAP as available. Next slide, please. And this is an example of what that this will look like for 2223. Next slide. Section six, which also is on goals, is around actions and services. And this is around our themes. During 2122 school year, district staff collaborated with parents and other educational partners to identify key themes and critical areas of focus. These themes directly tie to actions and services in the LCAP and are included in each action. For the 2223 LCAP, staff have added a brief overview of the program to complement the specific items. That are funded for program implementation. The prior year budget amount has also been included in each program item description for information only. Next slide, please. Goals, section six also on goals. It's analysis for 2122. At the end of each goal section, staff have provided descriptions of the following for 2122 actions as appropriate. So there's a description of, um, any substantive differences in planned actions and actual implementation of these actions. There's also an explanation of material differences between budget expenditures and estimated actual expenditures. There's also an explanation of how effective these specific actions were in making progress toward the annual measurable outcomes. And there's also a description of any changes made to the planned goal, metrics, desired outcomes or actions for the coming year. That resulted from reflections on prior practice. Next slide, please. Section six, goals, which is on our unduplicated students contributing. Each action item is identified as contributing or not contributing to supporting the needs of identified. Unduplicated students, low-income English learners or foster youth. And actions are identified as contributing when the programs primarily support and contribute to meeting the needs of the identified student groups. And special note is that all actions in the 2223 LCAP are contributing toward meeting the needs of our unduplicated students. Next slide, please. Some goals in the LCAP on undergo one achieving students for 2223. Um, this includes ongoing actions and services for instructional support, support programs for. Career tech ed, college and career pathways, African-American black students. English learners, literacy and intervention programs, visual and performing art programs, special ed students. Foster and homeless youth. Program evaluation and monitoring, international baccalaureate programs. School-based programs in the school plan for student achievement. Next slide, please. For goal two, we have thriving employees overview. Includes ongoing actions and services for professional development for classified and certificated staff. Recruitment and retention of staff, professional development programs by the Office of African-American Student Achievement. E-learning support and salary increases. Next slide, please. LCAP goal three, caring schools overview includes ongoing actions and services for supportive African-American black students and families. Additional vice principals to support school climate. Support for community engagement and outreach efforts. Support for training and for parent training and volunteers. Additional social emotional learning programs and full-service community schools. Next slide, please. What's new in the LCAP this year is LCAP goal four, which is on students with disabilities. This is to provide, um, providing support to enable our special needs students to achieve and thrive. Because students with disabilities are performing significantly lower than other student groups. In the district, West Contra Costa Unified School District must focus additional resources. To close the gap and accelerate learning in English language arts, mathematics, college and career readiness. West Contra Costa Unified School District has added LCAP goal four in order to strategically address the needs of our students with disabilities. Next slide, please.
Great, thank you. Uh, so looking at some of the budget elements in a very short period of time. It's important to recognize that within the local control funding formula. Uh, we have a carve-out for the supplemental concentration grant funds. Those are essentially the funds that we have to spend to meet under this plan that Larisha and her team put together. Next slide, please. So within that, you, you might wonder, well, the plan, is the plan really only that $56 million? In fact, no, part of what we've worked very hard to do is align the plan. Should I wrap up the last slide? We ran out of time. May I continue? It's right over there. So part of what, what, what we want to recognize is that while the, we only receive about $56 million in that supplemental and concentration grant funding to meet the needs of the student population. For all these actions and services that Larisha and her team have laid out in the LCAP so eloquently. We don't only spend that $56 million to meet the needs. In fact, our district out of the general fund, we spent about 400, we're planning to spend $485 million this next year. But of that, we found ways to align some of the other activities and work we do. With the work that's happening in the LCAP. So really dedicating about 258.8, 0.9 million dollars. In alignment with the activities in the LCAP. So it's not just limited to those dollars we receive. Next slide, please. Finally, you know, it's fun to look forward, but it's important to look backwards as well. And so here, looking at 2122, we see that we, while we budgeted in 2122, $54.6 million, the amount that we were required to budget. In LCAP expenditures, we actually spent $55.9 million. Uh, so, and, and the reason that it looks that way is not because we just went crazy at the LCAP expenditure, uh, store. It looks that way because in the prior year, we actually had a balance carryover that we had to add on. To the supplemental concentration grant funds that we were awarded in 2122. And so this is demonstrating that we actually met the legal requirements to spend this year's dollars the way we were supposed to, including the prior year carryover. Uh, with that, I think Larisha and I are happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? All right. See, Trustee Redford here.
President Christian, first, would you clarify as to three questions on this? Yes. Okay, thank you. So.
Three.
For the first question. Is there is a market decrease in 1.2 dual immersion, which drops from 2.1 million, 2021, 22. To 367,367.8. In this coming year. Can you explain to me why there is such a reduction in funds? And are we scaling back the DI program or how will that be supported?
Yeah, I found it. So I'm looking at, um, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the LCAP and what we actually have in our sheets. And part of the dual immersion, and I think I talked about this, was that originally they allocated for. Teachers that were actually not bargained for. So because those teachers were not actually bargained for, originally we came to the board, I don't know, I can't remember exactly when, um, during the school year, but we actually talked about the fact that. This particular program was actually underspent. And part of that was because there were teachers in here. That were going to be, um, newcomer teachers that were actually not funded. So. They just didn't allocate for newcomer teachers. That's the reason why you see actually a decrease in this particular program.
But we're still. We're continuing a DI program at the same level. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, the next question is on secondary school support. Which goes from 2.4 million to 13 million. Would you please explain the programs?
Sure, I, I can help with that one if that's okay. So essentially, where, where we looked at our staffing at the secondary level, uh, not only what, what the staffing that's required by the state, but the staffing that we've agreed to with our labor partners. Um, we're staffed this, this next year well above the staffing ratios. And so essentially what at secondary and uniformly at secondary. And, and so, uh, what we're allowed to do, because that is an increase of services. It's a services above what we, what we model in our staffing matrix, we're allowed to charge the staff in excess of the ratios. Into that category because it is an increase of services for students at, in these population groups.
Okay. And then, um, in college and career. Sorry, we have an increase in college and career from 3.4 mil to five. And it says that we're increasing administrative services. What are those supports in increasing administrative services?
So I can speak to a couple of the things that are in here, one being we added WAS teachers back into college and career. The WAS teachers. Were actually not in the LCAP and they should have been. So you see an increase because WAS teachers, we pay for the WAS teachers. Which fall under college and career, um, the FTE, which should come out of LCAP. Um, some other things that we paid for in here, just given sort of some of the concerns from the beginning of the school year. We actually are paying for college board, um, AP testing, which is an increase. We're actually paying for the practice SAT, which became a concern at the beginning of the school year. And we're also paying for a gateway to college, um, contract. That was written last year and has continued. It's something we're actually going to discuss. If this is something we want to continue. But it is in the sum of 575,000. Plus, we also have, once you add those items in here, which cost more than what we spent last year. We also have, um. You know. College and career is all our counselors and our CTE teachers. So some of those have increases. In salaries. And so you have to adjust those factors in here as well. And then we also have, um. Some additional CTE teachers that will be going to Deans or High School. Um, we have, um, a technology teacher going to Gateway. And Pano Middle School. And we also have a change. At, um, Kennedy High School. So there are some additional staff that are supporting CTE. And then also we added the WAS teachers in here and some additional items in terms of contracts and services to support testing of students.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Trustee Philip?
Dr. Hurst, um, specifically speaking to Gateway. Uh, if there is a, a decision or a thought about not continuing that program, is that something that you plan to bring to the board or to do unilaterally?
We would bring it to the board, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Trustee Smith Foul.
There is 141 plus pages of the LCAP. And I think that there needs to be, or Dr. Hurst, do you agree that there needs to be a, um. A way of going through this kind of step-by-step, goal-by-goal to the board. The overview, the overview that we just got, um, is a good summary, but it doesn't allow the board to dive deeply into. The LCAP plan. And the LCAP plan is one of those fundamental. Living documents that the board works with, is supposed to have oversight with. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think, I believe that it's certainly a community, um, engagement conversation.
Thank you for that. And then, Mr. McIntyre, you talked about there was some carryover. There was some carryover funds from one year to, I believe it was last year to this year. Do you believe that there should ever be carryover funds when it comes to. Providing for the students that are out. Do you believe that there should ever be carryover funds when it comes to providing for the students that are outlined in the LCAP? Or why would we have carryover money?
Uh, great question, you know, obviously both a moral and a factual one. When we look at the information on the carryover from the twenty twenty one year that we were required to spend in the twenty one twenty two current year. That's written into law and 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 it's funny, this is the first year where we were legally required to do that. Actually, in prior years of the LCAP, if there was if there was money that fell out, it was allowed to go to the fund balance. And rightfully, the the, you know, community groups at the state level who advocated to ensure that the LCAP dollars were being used for LCAP students. Advocated for a change in the treatment of any money that was unspent in a current year, that it must be. In the LCAP in a future year. And and so while it's never ideal or 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 something that we strive for operationally to find savings in the LCAP. Quite the opposite, we we really go out of our way to make sure we're spending those more, you know, semi more restricted dollars first. That's actually a mantra in school finance, spend your most restricted dollars first. In in this case, you know, with with COVID and many of the other things we're experiencing and difficulties in hiring. It's not unusual and we are we are a hundred percent not alone in finding ourselves in certain programs, especially where we have to hire staff. With carryover, and that's part of the reason why the legislature made the change in the current year to ensure when there is. That we have to plan for it in the next year's update, and we don't just find mysterious ways to let it fall into the fund balance.
Thank you. And then it says for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. For twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, West Contra Costa will receive a concentration grant funds of three million four hundred and forty nine thousand seven hundred and eighty three dollars. These funds will continue to be used to provide similar levels of staff support to unduplicated students at all of the identified schools. Can you tell me the identified schools?
Absolutely, that would be every single school that has a a unduplicated pupil percentage of fifty five percent or above. And and I'm certainly happy either in the Friday memo or or in any other format to bring it back to the board if necessary. To show the spreadsheet with the allocation to each school site based on the the pupil count at each of those school sites.
Thank you for that. And that count is currently, is that count currently still derived from our three and reduced lunch forms? Is is it still currently calculated that way or no?
That that's the biggest part of it. It also includes our foster youth and our English language learners. And so we look at an unduplicated count of those three student populations because often we'll have students in multiple populations simultaneously.
Thank you for so much. I would love to see that spreadsheet. The final thing I have is. Ms. Martin, you said that a couple of, a couple of meetings back, you said that we will get the SPSAs. The ones that are ready by June board meeting. Do we know how many of those are coming to us next on the twenty ninth?
We are in the current approval process of looking at the twenty two, twenty three SPSAs. My goal was to get them to the board at the last meeting, which will be June twenty ninth. Many of those are compliant, and I will be bringing those forward to the board on the twenty ninth.
Do you know how many out of our fifty plus schools are not offhand?
I don't have the number offhand. I actually just met with the team last week to make sure that we were getting them reviewed. And prepared to bring to the board on the twenty ninth, those that are not prepared and ready for the board on the twenty ninth. We will be bringing back at the board meetings in August.
And can we get those ahead of time so we'll have time to look at each one of those?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. President Christian, I'm complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martin and Ms. Dr. McIntyre for the presentation. I had three quick questions. They're all they're all tied about our. Last year's plan expenditures versus the actual expenditures. So looking at page one thirteen and one fourteen and the LCAP. My question is, in one point one, one ten and one seventeen. Sorry, I'll give you a minute to go to those pages.
Thank you.
No problem. One thirteen and one fourteen.
Okay, sir.
And my question is, in an internationals program and the English language, English learner support. And and the practice for African American students support and success. Why is it that we spent so little compared to what we actually budgeted? Because I'm assuming that also led to the changes on how much we're budgeting for next year in those areas.
I'm not sure our page numbering is the same on what we're looking at.
I'm sorry, it's page thirteen and four, one hundred and thirteen, one hundred and fourteen and my copy.
Of of one hundred and forty three?
Yes.
Okay.
Of one forty one, sorry. The one attached to the agenda.
Okay.
And.
International newcomers, I see. So why did it go down roughly nine hundred thousand dollars? And same with the dual immersion?
Yeah, so I see that there's obviously big changes.
Yes.
On how much we budgeted compared to how much they spent in those areas. So why did we, why did we not fully spend? I mean, I'm totally about saving money. But why is it that they didn't spend that funding when obviously we care about those three areas so much?
Estimated actual expenditure, so we're we're way below in these particular categories. Do you know why we? This and also curriculum in this one, right? Okay, so when when we looked at, for example, the dual immersion programs, typically when the LCAP were were funding what we call the leading edge. On these programs, and so as you see a new grade added, you have to buy the texts. And often you fund the teachers because you may not have a full class on that leading edge. And so, you know, much of the expense that we do expect to spend there would would go in that direction. And I think in this particular case, we we overestimated based on the size of the program on on the on the dual immersion. On the international newcomers, I I would have to dig into that and get back to you, sir, on the on the cause.
No problem. Obviously, these are big questions, a big document. So is it okay if I email you both and if you couldn't give me some answers on that?
We would absolutely be happy to answer every question you have.
Thank you so much. That's it, President Christian. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Rettler?
I do have a comment when it's time.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, we we actually do, Ms. Martin has your actual answer on the newcomers. And and it it would save time if she's able to provide it.
Well, I can go into more depth on the specifics of every single sort of item that was in there. But I can say for both of those dual language and the. The international baccalaureate newcomers, it was really around labor negotiations around a newcomer teacher. So they allocated quite a bit of money to hire newcomer teachers, which was never actually bargained. And so then therefore those positions went unspent. They also have positions in there to provide additional support to classroom. For classrooms for our dual language students and our newcomer students, and they were actually never able to fully hire and onboard. Obviously because of the staffing shortage, so a lot of this has to do with staffing and then just not creating the job description. For newcomer teachers, which is actually something they still want, so it's definitely something to talk about further.
Sorry, President Christian, may I follow up with that? And can I follow up with your question on that?
Yeah.
Thank you. So Ms. Martin. That we didn't spend that funding into for that program does not mean that we are providing less funding for next year. Correct? So we're not basing our our budget next year on two twenty eight for internationals and newcomers. We're still basing it on this year's but on this year's allocation. But we're ensuring that next year it's actually spent and negotiated and newcomer teachers. Unless I I heard that wrong. Please correct me, it's fine.
The funding is not exactly the same for any of the programs. And so Dr. McIntyre can go into more detail on what the funding is. But the funding for all the programs, actually, there was a a decrease in some of the programs, most of the programs.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to take more time, so we can talk offline. Thank you.
Trustee Rettler, do you have another?
I have comments, I'll email them in.
President Christian, is this the time for comments? May I make a comment?
Uh, yes. Trustee Rettler?
I'm sorry, are we making comments or not? We are making comments?
Yeah.
Okay, so my comment is is that I read this document and I agree with trustee Smith Folds. Is that there was a lot in here that the board had to dig through to find the information. When I think there's a really compelling, interesting, fun. Cutting edge, different program included in this LCAP. There's a lot of different spending. There's things that I'm really curious about. And I think that with a little time and effort in how to summarize it. And be more directed in the presentation, stand behind it. Be like, this is what we're doing with this money to support students. I think it could have driven a different conversation tonight. And so I'm, I hope that when you come back on June twenty ninth, we can have a different presentation. Which is like, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, and we stand behind it because there's really cool stuff. There's a new moms program, you're, it looks like you're putting instructional specialists in all elementary schools. It looks like some funding is moving around and, you know, there are questions about that. But I think that that it's a compelling story, and I hope that on the twenty ninth, when you come back. You can package it up differently and and really give a good presentation because I think a lot of this is really exciting. And I think that everybody deserves to to hear about it and. You know, so I just hope you'll take that as feedback on the document, so thank you.
Trustee Smith Foul.
At Dr. Hurst, I stated this before, and I just want to reiterate, it's a hundred and forty one plus pages, right? But it's one of our documents that we hold. That we hold is foundational, right? It's the LCAP, right? It's one of those documents that we look to as the top three goals of the district. About our achieving students, our supportive staff, our community schools. So I think it needs to have the due diligence of time to go through it. Also have some questions about decreasing in programs. What programs are being decreased? Who's grading these papers, right? As a teacher or a former teacher, you know, you get a different result when you have a kid grade their own paper, right? When they grade their own paper, it's going to come a little differently. So how are we monitoring these programs that we invest the money in? And are we seeing the results that the programs are saying? The other thing is I looked through the LCAP. I saw a lot of things that said, you know, data not found, or we don't have the data for that particular part of the LCAP. And there's questions as to why, why don't we have the data to to follow through with if something's working or not? I think that's a critical question that has to be answered. I am looking forward to next, the next meeting, seeing the school plans, the school site plans for student achievement. Also have questions about, again, this is a, this is a thick document and it's what we hope to be doing. But are we doing it, right? Are we doing the things that we say in the LCAP summary? Are we doing the things that we are projected to do next year? Are we, it says here that a final area of anticipated support with these funds is parent outreach. WCC USD will provide scals across the district to strengthen the home school connection. With essential, which is essential to ensuring that students' academic and SEO needs are met.
Miss Folds, I I apologize for interrupting you. Would you mind if I just took a second? And and with President Christian's permission, came back to you in a minute, just so it's ten o'clock.
Oh, that's fine.
Stand otherwise, some of these items are timely tonight, they don't happen.
That's fine, Clark Gonzalez Hoi.
I apologize for interrupting you.
That's okay.
Sorry, back to you, President Christian and Parliamentary.
Okay, Mr. Chair, it is now ten o'clock and according to the agenda that we have adopted. Any remaining items on the agenda that require immediate attention need to come at this time, which would move us. Directly to. Item E one.
E one?
I actually, the the public hearings are legally required. Things.
So we need a motion.
President Christian, I'll make a motion that we extend our meeting until we are done with all E and F items.
Reckler's second.
All right. So, comments?
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi. Gonzalez Hoi, would you, would you listen to a friendly amendment?
Sorry, trustee Smith Folds, I couldn't hear you. What was that?
Would you be willing to hear a friendly amendment to your motion?
Sure.
That we extend the meeting to finish F and E as stated before. But we also have G comments from the board, but they'd be limited to two minutes.
Would the trustee clarify, is that two minutes per board member or two minutes for the entire?
Thank you for that. Two minutes per board member.
Trustee Smith Folds, would you? I would be fine accepting your amendment, but could we also add a time limit? That if we are not to comments by eleven thirty, we will not do comments. Would you be okay with that? I'm sorry, I have a six in the morning meeting.
I will accept that.
Okay, thank you. Then I will accept it if trustee Reckler also agrees as a second.
Reckler's second.
All right, and now we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Leon?
Leon, yes.
All right, trustee Rettler?
Reckler, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Foul?
Smith Folds, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
All right, Clark Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
All right, and myself, yes. All right. E two.
Mr. Mr. President, if I may recommend that at this point that you open the public hearing. For the LCAP draft plan that was presented to the Board of Education, take any input by any people who would like to speak on it and then close the public hearing.
Okay, so. Okay. Okay, I am opening up for a public hearing. Presentation.
The presentation has already taken place. We just need to open up the floor for a public hearing for any public comment on the LCAP.
Does anyone want to speak on public for comment for for the LCAP? Any member of the public?
We have one hand raised on Zoom. Ms. Jean Kinster, please unmute yourself.
Hello, good morning, good morning, but good evening. I am very interested in having maybe a special meeting or a town hall meeting or something where everyone can attend. And dig through that LCAP fully. I think that's something very important for the staff, community and parents and everybody to go through. And that would be amazing if you would allow that to happen. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Our next speaker is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I was going to say something very similar to the previous speaker. I have read through this document before. It is very dense. And if we are just going to be good stewards of the the funds that are there and we're saying these are what the funds are going to do. That we just make a better effort in reaching out to our communities and sharing, explaining and right allowing. The Q and A of the document and these funds, especially we're in some really pivotal times. And we need to get all the buy-in and the support possible from our communities. So that's the staff, that's students as well, so they understand these funds that are out there that are supposed to be for them. Well, that are for them and to support them in their self advocacy and holding us responsible and accountable. For making sure they receive what the document says they are to receive. Thank you.
And our last public comment is from Zalon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
I agree with what they said, but also with um trustee um Jamila Smith Folds said, how is this going to happen and who's going to watch it happen? Like, we need to see steps on it happening because it looks really good on paperwork, but the deliverables have always been a problem in this district when it comes to LCAP and things happening. And like um uh trustee Demetrius said, you know, no one answered about the black students. You guys did respond to the other two categories he asked, but nobody answered to why there was funds left over for the black students. So we need to view, if this document doesn't look at all outcomes for all kids and ensuring that it's gonna, the money's gonna be spent on some measurable outcomes is just a nice presentation with no weight to it because that's what's been happening with black kids in the LCAP. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
All right, and we appreciate that the comments that was done and we closed the public hearing.
Thank you, President Christian. I just um, uh, I wanted to remind us that I interrupted trustee Smith Folds in the middle of her comments. Um, I was wondering if we, if I wouldn't mind giving her another minute to finish her thoughts since I interrupted her. Thanks.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez hoy. The callers actually probably summarized exactly what I wanted to say towards the end, so I can leave it there. We're just reiterating what the three callers just said in the um, in the open public hearing. And make sure that we um understand the depth of this document and give it its, its due diligence. Thank you. I'm complete.
All right, thank you. Item three. F three. You go to F three, uh, literacy support, block grant. Oh, number two. Uh, F two, public hearing on the budget.
Thank you, President Christian. It's honored to be for you, be for you tonight, uh, the board and the community and staff and those who are watching from home. I do want to point out that the, as, as the team works to pull up the budget presentation, uh, that, that something like the development of a budget for a school district this size with four hundred eighty-five million dollars in expenditures, uh, just in the general fund, not counting facilities and construction, uh, doesn't come together uh by me alone. In fact, there are dozens and dozens of people involved and a couple of them are here with us tonight who I want to point out. Sungjae Cha, your executive director of fiscal services, new this year in this position. It has done a great job of running the team and pull, helping pull this together. Andrea Arnold, who's a coordinator of fiscal services, is also here with us. Jeff Carter, who I, uh, we stole from HR, who does position control is here with us tonight, as is Kristen Crum, who's our payroll coordinator. So these are just some of the amazing people who contributed this document, since they're here in public tonight and I made them stay late uh, to, to be a part of this and introduce to you as some of the leaders who contributed. Uh, I wanted to uh make sure that you knew that they were here. Also contributing to stock, this document includes Paul Mancing, quarter, coordinator fiscal, Megan Fock, uh, who is a uh financial planning analyst, Linda Grunhofer and Jermaine Quieter, uh, who are outside consultants, uh, who have helped, uh, helped us tighten up a lot of our processes and pull this together, uh, real experts in their own rights. Lot Lynn Potter and Raquel Flores from Categoricals were instrumental in putting this together. And I have to say, it's probably one of the best looking budget books I've made in my career, thanks to Kyra Brown and Veronica Vega. And, and so hopefully as, as people take the time to look through this first draft, because actually the final document will be about another fifty pages longer. Um, really enjoy some of the enhancements because we've really tried to spend time. You know, there's a twenty page summary right in the front that explains everything we're doing in this budget in plain language. Uh, the next version will have pages and pages for each school site and each program. It, that doesn't require you to have knowledge of how school districts are run to see how we're spending your public dollars. And so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. So as you know, we're, we're adopting the budget as part of a normal budget cycle. Next slide, please. Uh, and, and that cycle is continuous. Uh, right now, we're, we just came off of the May revise on the left there and we're here working toward the adoption. So this is the requirement before you can adopt the budget to, as for us to hold the public hearing tonight. And so hopefully if people are interested in commenting on this uh document or have questions, they'll do so when I finish presenting. Uh, we, the board is required to have a public hearing and then adopt the budget before the end of the month. But we're doing so based on information in the May revise, as you heard from Kevin Gordon at Capitol Advisors. We don't know what the final state budget looks like yet, and so we're making some assumptions in this plan. And in part of the executive summary for this plan, I do spend some time talking about some of the what ifs that were in the May revise that the county wouldn't necessarily let us include in our budget projections, but what they could mean for us if they did come to be. And I think Kevin Gordon's uh kind of prognostications in that regard uh may actually show that some of that uh reading is worth taking the time to do. Next slide, please. Now, when we develop a budget, it's really important that we do so with it, it, with, with the student population in mind. And as our student population changes, so should the way we spend our money. And, and this district has been one of the, one of those districts in the state, like many who are experiencing declining enrollment. But with the, you know, with the advent of COVID and especially Omicron, we've not only seen our attendance drop, but we've seen our, I'm sorry, enrollment drop, but we've seen our attendance drop. And so we just want to recognize that the assumptions we're using to build out your uh budget include the drop in enrollment, but we're assuming that attendance is going to get a little better. So you know, we were historically in the ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five percent range that students which the percentage of your students would actually show up in their seat. Well, this year we dropped to ninety percent. We're not assuming that it's going to be ninety percent in the future. We're, you know, we're generally hoping that, that students are going to get back to the normal schedule. Next slide, please. Now, when we look at that student population and how we're funded, we know the biggest funding source is that local control funding formula. And there was a chart on this actually in the LCAP uh presentation. And but here's, you know, for the nitty gritty, the numbers, people like me who, who've never seen a spreadsheet, they couldn't improve on or dig into. Uh, we wanted to show the way we're actually funded on our biggest funding source, the local control funding formula. We're funded by grade spans based on the average daily attendance when students show up and are in their seats. And so, for example, if we have a kindergartner, we receive, we last, this current year, we received eight thousand ninety-three dollars if they showed up every day this year. Now, with the COLA for next year that we heard Kevin Gordon speak of, we're going to receive five, six point five, six percent COLA. That's a big number, but it's a big number because inflation is through the roof. In addition, the governor's allocated two point one billion that would be allocated on a grade span basis similarly. Uh, and, and so that was meant to handle inflation outside of labor, according to the governor. So when we think about our supplies, books and supplies and our services and other operating expenditures like utilities, uh, this is what the governor was providing that for, but, but he included it in the LCFF calculation. And so just recognizing that what, that while we receive a substantial amount of money for the students we serve, um, it, it comes in very unique ways. Next slide, please. So when we look at the total amount we're going to receive, we say, gosh, this looks huge, three hundred and seven million dollars that we're receiving. But keep in mind, even with that giant number, the amount we receive this year is two hundred ninety-nine point six million. So because of declining enrollment, we're not feeling the impact of six point five, six percent COLA. Because six point five, six percent COLA on three hundred million dollars should have meant we got nearly twenty million more dollars. But we're really getting about seven million more dollars because of that declining enrollment. Next slide, please. Now, the, how we build our budget and the way we staff our schools is very, very important. And in fact, there's a, a really uh talented team of people that come together to build what we call the staffing matrix. And the staffing matrix is really built with the goal of equality, not equity, equality. And I'll explain why in just one second. So we have to assume that based on student populations, we know that we're going to say, for example, every twenty-two students in first grade, we're going to provide a teacher for. And we have these formulas at every grade level and that's what's laid out in this document. So this, this staffing matrix is really designed to meet the equality needs or the, or what we would call the basic operation of the school district. Whereas other funding sources like the LCAP and Title I are meant to meet the equity needs of the students. And so that, the, I just want to be clear that the staffing matrix is, is really intended for the equality or the basic operation design. We build the assumptions of the organization. You can see here, it's broken down on the left by position. Uh, and, and we build one, each one of these for elementary schools, for K eights, for middle schools, for high schools, and even for alternate schools. You see, we've got the position name on the left-hand side. The second column includes the position criteria. So some of the criteria may include, like you must have a certain number of students or a certain percentage of UPP students that would qualify you for more staffing. Uh, the third column includes the funding source where appropriate. And then the last column, uh, i- if there was a contractual agreement to a certain ratio, then we try to cite it because we want to demonstrate to our labor partners that we're really listening and honoring the, the commitments we make. So, so assumptions and how we build our budget are really important and we want you to know, we do have a process we go through to build those assumptions. Uh, the next slide is the history of, of uh historical, historical staffing by job classification. Uh, here you'll see how we've staffed for both certificated, classified and management over time. Now, one of the things that I pointed out, both at the first and second interim, is there wasn't a real tight correlation between our student population changes and our staffing population changes. Now, there's a couple reasons that could happen. As we receive specialized funding to get out of COVID, or if they up, if the state ups the amount of supplemental and concentration grant funding we meet to, get to meet student needs, we might see some misalignment. But as the funding, especially the LCFF funding has leveled out and now we're on a COLA only basis, we're not being recovering from the last great recession, we would expect to see closer alignment between the staffing and our enrollment populations. And this plan, this budget does do that. Uh, so while our numbers are, are, you know, higher this year than they've been in prior years, despite the fact our student population gone down, some of the reasons those numbers are higher because we're spending those COVID dollars, those S or federal dollars. And as those dollars go away, we will be reducing staff tied to those positions because that is limited use money, meaning it's one-time funds. Next slide, please. Now, one of the narratives that I want to be real careful about because, you know, the, the state and the governor loves to spend a lot of time talking about how much money they're pumping into public education. And, and, and they are. They, they really are. I mean, I'm not trying to complain about what we're getting, but I want the community to understand what it means for us and what the impact of inflation means for us. So this, this chart you see here on the inflationary revenues and cost chart, I've broken down that pot of money, that two point one billion dollars that the state allocated through the local control funding formula for us to meet non-labor inflationary causes. And then I have the effect of the six point five, six percent COLA and, and how it's meant to cover, cover labor and other inflationary costs. And so what you see here is when I break those out for, as a proportion of revenues that each represents, that seven and a half million dollars of revenue growth that I told you about, that if we weren't, didn't have a declining enrollment, would have been about twenty. Well, about three and a half million of that is on that supplemental additional LCFF funding meant to cover supplies and materials and services and other operating costs. Well, that's three and a half million dollars of revenue for us. But we, we, we expect to absorb about two point one million dollars in, in, in inflationary costs in books and supplies and about two point four billion, million dollars in inflationary costs and services and other operating costs. So that's closer to seven percent. And, and some of the reason is, for example, in healthcare and insurance and utilities, we expect the inflationary rates to be near hyperinflation rates uh in some of those categories. On the labor side, we see things similarly, four million dollars in income from the LCFF because of COLA and af- afterwards reduction in step and column. But also we see, for example, there are things that were bargained forty years ago, like step and column. We have to pay that whether we, we change nothing else in the organization, that will go up. In this case, so to, for all of our bargaining units, so to go up about two point four million. Health and welfare will increase. We assume a five percent increase in this case, not six point five, six percent. It could be more, it could be less, but that assumption is two point one million dollars. Uh, STIRS and PERS increases, they're going up like twelve percent each this year. And as you heard from Kevin Gordon and his team, there's no additional money like there was in prior years to help offset, offset that. So the inflationary costs from year to year changes, just on STIRS and PERS is six point five million dollars. So you can see when we look at just inflation compared to the inflation revenue we're getting, we're still technically not as well off as we might be uh otherwise. And so I just want to help people understand why you can get all this money, as the state says, uh, and not necessarily be in like a tremendously better situation on a dollar for dollar basis. Next slide, please. So here you, you, it, this is a bit of a busy slide. I'm sorry for that, but what, I like for people to be able to see their proportionality, but both our revenue types and our expenditure types. This is the entire general fund, both restricted and unrestricted. We do dig into detail on the unrestricted and restricted side, just a couple minutes. On the left, you see the revenues and you see our total general fund revenues are roughly four hundred and sixty-nine point five million dollars. It's hard to fathom or think about expenditures on that scale. Um, but, and I recognize that because I'm the one saying these huge words, but, but trying to fathom what that might look like and how many people are involved. That's why we include those staffing levels. So you can see there's over four thousand people involved in this plan, plus we have tens of millions of dollars in other expenditures. So we talked about our biggest funding source, the local control funding formula. And that represents about sixty-seven point four three percent of our revenue, that three hundred and seven million dollars. But on the, on the orange portion of that slide on the pie on the left-hand side, that's seventy million dollars. Roughly half of that is the federal COVID funding, the SR three funding. Now, if you sat through several of these boring budget presentations in the past, you right, might remember that we talked about getting COVID money last year and we did, we actually received the cash last year. So a natural question would be like, why is this number so big this year? Well, the problem is we couldn't recognize the revenue until we spent it. And so we're planning to spend this portion of that SR three revenue in the, in the next year, and now we can recognize the revenue, even though the cash was sitting in our bank. Finally, looking at the uh, the gray, the state revenue, we've, that, that includes things like uh your uh, for example, your AB six oh two special ed revenue is going to be in there. Um, and, and, and so when you look at the, the totality of the funding sources, then we, we get on the right side and we look at where we're planning on spending them. And so some of the things to note here, when we look at the blue with certificated staffing, the orange with classified staffing and the gray with the benefits, uh, we have to acknowledge that management, classified management would be in classified and certificated management would be in the certificated uh part of each of those pies and that labor for the total general fund equals seventy-four point three percent. Uh, also, we see that while we, we've got a fair bit of expenditures in the yellow with the uh, the books and supplies and in the services and other operating expenditures, we've got quite a bit in there. But as we have positions that we have to fill that we're unable to recruit for, that, that's where we end up with things like those consulting contracts where we have, like, for example, in special ed, if we can't hire a local paraprofessional, then we have to staff out for a paraprofessional until we can hire our own internal person and stop that service. There are people in the five thousands is what I'm trying to say, in the services and other operating expenditures. But our goal, our goal is absolutely to minimize that and work with HR and hire our own people where we can over time and shift that expenditure pool from services back into labor, because after all, we are a business of big people developing little people. Next slide, please. So we, we looked at these giant numbers with the total general fund. And, and so one of the things I like to do is really dig into the individual parts of the fund. So here we have the unrestricted general fund. And this is probably the most important part of the presentation, uh, except for the last page. And the reason it is, is because the unrestricted general fund is the ultimate and final source of solvency for the organization. So if we overspend in any other part of, of, of any other fund, it has to be, we have to dip into this fund to make up the difference. And so this part of the, the general fund is the most important. So there you see that three hundred and seven million dollars in the LCFF. You see this, the, the unrestricted state revenue portion, the local revenue. And on top there, you see an inter-fund transfer of fourteen million dollars. This plan, the multi-year budget that you're being presented tonight, does not include us using those OPEB dollars that we talked about in prior budget presentations, but it absolutely does include us transferring money from Fund Seventeen, which is your solvency fund into the general fund. In fact, under the current plan, over the next three years, we would be using one hundred percent of Fund Seventeen, uh, all thirty-four and a million dollars. And, and so I just want to make that very clear because that's not an ideal position, but I'll explain why in the last slide and, and where we're hedging with that eight, uh, eight point one billion dollars that the state has, that we're not allowed to include in our budget presentation at this point. So one of the things we have to recognize is that we also have to spend money on special education. We have to transfer it from the unrestricted general fund to the restricted side. And we also have to do that for routine restricted maintenance. So in this case, we have to transfer seventy-four point six million dollars that we take from LCFF dollars and send to the restricted side of the budget. There you see on the right-hand side, the proportionality of our expenditures. And in this case, the unrestricted general fund labor cost is eighty point one percent. Next slide, please. Here on the restricted side of the budget, right on top on the left, you see where we transferred those dollars in for routine restricted maintenance and for the special ed contribution. And that's why we're able to actually meet those expenditures you see on the right side. Without that seventy-four million dollar transfer in, the restricted, restricted side of the budget would run out of cash probably in. the restricted, restricted side of the budget would run out of cash probably in, you know, February. And, and so this, these contributions keep that side of the budget uh, whole within this side, all restricted programs, those S R funds, the special ed programs, the routine restricted maintenance and keeping up our facilities is all in this side of the budget. Next slide, please. One of the areas that we spend a fair bit of time talking about is special education because it's a major part of our educational program. Every education, every student who has an I E P is first to general education student and they get general ed dollars first. But where those general it's dollars don't meet their needs, we then have to, to spend other funding sources typically contributions from the unrestricted general fund. And so what you see on the blue line is the special ed revenue over time that we've received from both the state and feds. Notice it's not growing at nearly the rate of inflation. What does that mean? It means the rate, the amount that we have to contribute from the unrestricted general fund to make up the difference has grows over time. And, and so part of I, I, I've, I've spent a fair bit of time with, uh, with, with Sonja Neely Johnson and, and Steve Collins, uh, who works in her department. And I know we've got some meetings come up where we're going to talk about some of the structural changes that, and, and I know uh, Ms. Johnson, Neely Johnson has a lot of ideas as the new Selpa director. And we'll be trying to work through how, how, how those changes can hopefully mitigate the growth of costs while still meeting the, the legally required student needs for each one of those students in their program. Next slide, please. So this is probably the most important slide. And in fact, some of the wording from the slide is going to be on the adopt, the pre-sees for the adoption budget that you're going to be adopting on the twenty ninth of this month. And so this shows the revenues and expenditures over the multi-year budget period because we have to demonstrate not only this year, but for the subsequent two years that we can meet our financial requirements of our, of our budget plan. Now, the county, when, when we were, uh, when we got, well, when we worked with the county and they were saying what they need to approve our budget, what they said is we had to present a budget that demonstrated we had adequate cash to cover all of our expenses next year and in twenty-three, twenty-four. This budget does that, but it only gets there by using Fund seventeen dollars. Now that sounds horrendous. And I acknowledge it sounds horrendous, but one of the things that we could not include in the revenue side of this budget plan was the eight point one billion dollars that Governor Newsom had set aside for, it was one-time funding source, that flexible funding source that you heard Kevin Gordon talk about. Well, we can't just pretend it doesn't exist, but the county said we couldn't put it in our budget and that's fine. Um, we, we know that that funding source would not allow us to use the three-year average A D A like the governor's proposal did for the L C F F funding. So, so we would be using last this, this year's P two A D A, which would be the higher of the current or prior year, we're talking about next year. And in that case, if we just assume that the governor's proposal for that money comes through, that would generate thirty-five million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars in revenue. Almost the exact dollar for dollar amount we're transferring from Fund seventeen for solvency. Um, now that doesn't solve our structural deficit problem. And so on the bottom of the slide, you see the solvency plan. When you're being asked to approve the budget on the twenty-ninth, you're not only asked to be approved of the budget, but the solvency planning in, in the budget. That is a requirement of the county. The solvency plan in twenty-three, twenty-four, in that kind of peach color down at the bottom there shows the complete cessation or, or, or reduction, or the expenditure of thirty-two point seven million dollars in S R funds. Doesn't quite exhaust yes, our funds. We have about thirteen point nine million dollars that carry over to twenty-four, twenty-five, which is the last year we have to spend those funds. But it also means we have to stop the expenditures on all the staff and, and materials and supplies. We're spending those S R dollars on as they, as they are exhausted. And so what you see is this year, we're spending that thirty-two million, thirty-two point seven million and next year we're not. It's going to drop to that thirteen million number. So as each year as it drops, we have to stop the expenditures tied to those S R dollars. So what you see in the reductions in twenty-three, twenty-four are totally on the restricted side of the budget. But when you get to twenty-four, twenty-five, I want to note one, two, three, four lines down where it says F T reduction due to declining enrollment. That is very much on the unrestricted side of the budget. That is maintaining the staffing matrix and the plan in the L cap and Title One, but really staying true to the formulas that we've established in our staffing matrix and honoring the number of students we're serving within the system. So we're not taking away from students on a per student basis. We're recognizing we have fewer students and we're serving the ones we have exactly the same at the same level in this plan. But those cuts come on the unrestricted side of the budget. So I wanted you to know the solvency plan affects both sides of the budget in, in future years. And so with that, I'll, uh, yield my two minutes and thirty-five seconds back to, back to the board.
Uh, question. Any members of the public have a public comment?
So I, I would hope we'd be very clear that we're opening the public, opening the hearing for public comment. So it would be a gavel in, gavel out sort of thing. We have to take the time.
All right, public hearing portion. We'll open up the public hearing portion. Are there any members from Pope? To speak?
Our first public comment is Jean Kinstor. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening again, board. I would also like to ask that at some time in the future, there's a town hall or special board meeting where you'll go over the budget and explain it really well for staff, community, parents and everybody. I also would really like to see on both this and the, um, L cap, a PDF on your website that people can find English and Spanish that's searchable in case people need to find parts of it quickly. Thank you much for considering this.
That concludes our public comment.
All right. More comment, board comments? Uh, trustee Redman?
I hope I can ask questions and not just make comments this time. So first I want to thank the crew in the back. Thank you for all your hard work. And I love how in education you get honored by having to stay up until ten thirty. In an empty M P R. So thank you for that. Um, if I could just start with one housekeeping, uh, task. If we could put page numbers on this so that I can flip through and, you know, we can identify the page quickly. So the first question is, what happens to Fick Matt?
Big Matt's alive and well. Uh, though, as long as we're doing what the county asks us to do, and, and I do want you to know that, uh, Javeta Cleveland, our fiscal advisor assigned by the county, is available to answer questions about any county processes or, or help in our oversight as well. But as long as we keep moving in the right direction, we're meeting the county oversight requirements, then, then there's, there's no reason to, to keep bothering Mr. Mike Fine in our operations.
Okay, thank you. The next is on the L C F F entitlement calculator results twenty twenty-three. Can you, uh, please, uh, give the assumption, um, the supplemental and concentration grant, the percent U P P?
Absolutely. One of the things you may or may not have noticed and, and Larisha reminded me I was supposed to mention, but then I got on the little roll and I'm sorry. Uh, is the fact that actually with the declining enrollment, the amount we're going to receive for supplemental concentration grant is slightly lower next year than it is this year based on the cola provided and our student counts. And, and that's important to recognize because there are a lot of changes in the L cap and, and some of them were driven by the fact that we're going to have slightly fewer dollars there. Now that's not set in stone. If we end up with that fifteen percent cola, then supplemental concentration grant will go the other way. But for now, this is where we are.
The the next question, since I only have three, is where is the Mandarin school bus? And where is older adult school education or what are the plans for those?
The Mandarin school bus i- is ultimately going to end up in the L cap. Uh, I don't, I had to check again to see if we actually included that line. If not, we're going to have to find places to make some minor tweaks to, to do that. But a- as you might also recall, when the, the, that there is a portion of that that we're covering for students who would be those, those free and reduced lunch students. And then that we, there's some of the fees are passed on to the families who are not free and reduced families, uh, to ride that bus. The older adult program is a general fund transfer from the unrestricted general fund into the adult ed program, that thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, obviously if the city or county grant that the, the wonderful public member who spoke earlier comes to be, then we'll cut that back because that, those dollars are intended for general ed K twelve students. But they, they're fully flexible under the law and at the board's discretion. And so right now we're using them, that small tiny bit, uh, for that program. That's also important within this community.
So one more time to clarify, that bus for, that serves free and reduce that portion that serves free and reduce lunch students. And older adult school funding, your intent is to budget those for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Correct.
Thank you. If we do happen to have more time for more questions, I'd love to, otherwise I'm complete.
Any other question? Trusted me on that. Tracy Smith, oh.
So I have a couple of questions. When we heard from Kevin and Yvonne, it, I believe they said one thousand five hundred dollars per people. Is that coming to our students? And where is that in the budget? Is it in the budget?
It's not in the budget at the county's guidance. And that wasn't just guidance to us, that was to every district in the county. And I believe probably in every county, uh, the guidance was not to include that fifteen hundred dollars per A D A, which is that eight point one billion dollars of one-time money. Uh, because there was such contention about its treatment, specifically in the Senate. Because the Senate wants to take all that eight point one billion and put it into the L C F F calculator with a fifteen percent cola. And so that's why it's not included in the model. But if we were to receive those dollars as the governor had intended in the May revise, that's that thirty-five million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars I talked about, that would just magically appear one time in our budget in twenty-two, twenty-three. It'd be one-time dollars. It would help us with our cash need, but it wouldn't necessarily solve our structural deficit issue.
Okay. And on that, and Mr. McIntyre, you talk really high level. So I just want to ask a question just to see if we can break it down a little bit. And I do agree with the comment from the, the public that we need to have a town hall, special meeting, what, whatever we need to call it to go over the budget line by line and very, very, uh, clearly with the language. Um, so we had, we have revenue that's four million, six hundred and four, four million sixty-nine, four hundred and sixty-nine million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one. That's the revenue. That's how much money we get in. We spend four hundred and eighty-five million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five, right? And that if you subtract, that means that we are missing or don't have sixteen million, one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Is that accurate?
Absolutely.
Okay. You have a plan for where we're going to get that sixteen million, one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Is that accurate?
Uh, uh, we will certainly, staff will be making recommendations as we move forward. Uh, but one of the things that we were balancing it, you know, if, if I came to you with a plan that zeroed out the budget, uh, had massive cuts in it and then magically thirty-five million dollars from the state appeared, you probably wouldn't want me around very much longer. So we had a little bit of a balancing act in meeting the needs of the students who are here today versus the unknown on the revenue side of the picture because of that massive pot of money that the governor just kind of set aside and the government, the county said we couldn't include today.
So what you're doing, what you're saying is you're kind of on hold until you get the answer. And then you're going to do new subtraction. Is that, is that accurate? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
And does the expenditures include restricted fund? Can you just tell me that again? They do?
Yes, ma'am. They do. That, the, the numbers you gave me are the total general fund, both restricted and unrestricted side.
Okay. And then is anyone asking the question and then subsequently after asking the question, trying to solve the problem, why there's a decline in enrollment in attendance? That may not be a question for you, Mr. McIntyre. That may be a question for the superintendent or Ms. Martin. The question again is, is anyone asking the question and subsequently trying to solve the problem in this district about declining enrollment in attendance? I know we heard from Moran, Moran Trahelia, but are we actively working in that direction, Dr. Hurst or Ms. Martin?
We are working, uh, on that. So there is a work group, um, uh, and part of the presentation that you heard from Moran, uh, was speaking to that, but there is a conversation that's happening about addressing that issue.
Thank you so much. And then I had a question for, I had a question for Kevin and Yvonne, but they are not here anymore. Mr. McIntyre, can you answer this question? They spoke to about being very quick to pivot with independent study and updating board policy that reflects what the state is going to add. Can you tell, or Ms. Martin or Mr. McIntyre or Superintendent Hurst, can you tell me how that impacts not only our independent, site independent study, but how that would in, impact virtual school and land Vista?
So the changes that would be required, we would find in trailer bill language, which is typically not included in most of the budget act. So it depends what level of detail we get in the final budget act. Uh, sometimes we get some very specific direction in the budget act and some actual law, legal language. And sometimes we have to wait for those trailer bills to come out in the following weeks, uh, even following months sometimes. But what, what Kevin I think is trying to set us up for is the reality that the, the legislature seems to be acknowledging and recognizing that some of the proposals they made for this year for independent study proved to be harmful operationally and created some real difficulty and hardship for meeting the educational needs of our students. And that was highlighted with Omnicron. Because we had all, you know, the, the, remember the initial guidance was, you know, if you were exposed, go home, we'll see you in ten days. But then, and that's fine, but I know students that went home four times. So they're at home forty days, but guess what? We only got to claim attendance for fifteen of those days. So that doesn't necessarily work because we still have the cost of presenting that education to those students every single day. And I think that, you know, we expect changes that are going to recognize some of this in the updated legislation. But to, to take advantage of whatever changes the state makes, it often requires us to update board policy to leverage those changes. And so I think he's just giving us a heads up. Pay attention, look out for it, be ready to move. It's not something you could wait for two or three board meetings on. If it publishes Monday and we've got a board meeting on Wednesday, well, you know what? Figure out how to make it an emergency item and get it on there on the board agenda. That, that's what I'm hearing when I hear, uh, Kevin Gordon's, uh, prep.
And that will impact and that Mr. Gordon's prep will impact not only site independent studies, but will it impact our virtual school and will it impact Land Vista? I guess that's my question. Ms. Martin, will it impact those two places also?
It could possibly, um, but as Dr. McIntyre said, I think we need to come, we need to actually see what the trailer bill says first and what the changes, um, are in the trailer bill. Um, but virtual school has been, um, allocated teachers and staffing, um, in preparation for students still returning for Vista Virtual, uh, and Vista Land. Um, but I do think we need to actually see what the trailer bill says first, but there could be some implications.
Okay. Thank you for that. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right. Thank you. Any other question? Go ahead. Tracy Phillips?
Thank you, uh, very much. So looking at this, uh, presentation there, um, is a solvency plan and it's on slide thirteen. And it calls for twenty-five point nine million dollars uh, in reductions. Um, and it says F T E. So that's essentially layoffs, retirements, people leaving, uh, the district. Um, so my question is to Ms. Cleveland. Are you still here, Ms. Cleveland?
Yes, I am.
I want to welcome you back to the district. Uh, we should get an office for you. Uh, you won't have to come back a third time. This is ridiculous, but, uh, welcome back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my question is, if the board adopts this solvency plan and later on this year, staff makes these recommendations. Staff makes these recommendations. For cuts in line with this number. And the board bucks again. And says, no, we ain't doing it. Just like the board did a couple of months ago. What's the county going to do?
I would assume that the county would continue with the going concern determination. For sure. And keep my role in place. And there is another step if the county does not approve a future budget, there's some steps with that as well. But hopefully we won't reach that point.
Hopefully, but. That's what you guys said you were going to do last time. And the board didn't care. So the board doesn't care again. What are you going to do?
Well, I hope that we can get there. That's all I can say at this point, new coming into it. I hope that. We could look at the budget, look at our options and make the tough decisions that are required.
I hope we can make the tough decisions too, but if the board doesn't, I suggest you and Ms. Mack, you figure something out. Thank you. Thank you very much. And. That's my big question. Hopefully somebody gets an answer because it's a real risk.
All right. I don't any other question? All right.
Thank you, President Christian. Thank you, Dr. McIntyre, for your presentation, and thank you to your staff in the back for all the work they've done. I did want to know a little bit more about as we adopt the budget in two weeks. Are we also going to get a breakdown on the cuts that have been made or we're going to make in? You know, services and books and supplies, et cetera. I know that Dr. Hurst. And and all the cabinet having working hard the last few months and cutting certain expenditures. Are we also going to get a list of that?
I wasn't planning to include that in the final budget document, but I can certainly compile a secondary, maybe something for the Friday update, if that's okay. That includes what where we've made reductions and specific expenditures and fours and fives. I'm assuming you don't want summary level data. You want specific. Cuts and contracts, correct?
Yeah, I would love to see the specifics.
Great.
And the work that's been done. Thank you.
Okay, if it and and in all fairness to my team, we're we're in the middle of we're 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 we just finished putting the budget together and now we're starting year end close. So it may take a few weeks to put together. I just want to manage expectations on that.
Absolutely. Thank you. And my second question is for Ms. Cleveland. Ms. Cleveland, thank you for being here. My question is. Do you agree with the way that we're moving forward and the way that our staff is looking at projections for the next few years?
Yeah, I have spent some time reviewing the documents. I definitely think the district is moving in the right direction. I think Mr. McIntyre is doing a good job. I've been there before in his role, and so. I think that there's definitely, you know, some progress since second interim. And I I do feel comfortable that the district is moving in the right direction with the current team.
Thank you very much, and that's it. Thank you.
All right. Anymore? Go ahead. Trust you.
Thank you, just for one more question. So what will it look like after this eight point one billion gets divvied up or expected to get divvied up? How how would this change your fiscal solvency plan?
Well, what it would allow us to do i- is seek some direction from the board on how do we just want to replace on a dollar for dollar basis? The funds we're spending in Fund Seventeen? Are we willing to continue to deficit spend at a fairly steep rate because we have staff needs? There's got, there's a balancing act that's going to have to be achieved because you you know, the reality is the loaf of bread costs a lot more today than it did a year ago for staff. And I know there's going to be some pent up demand. But certainly, as I, as I'm, you know, kind of sending information to Javetta and we're collaborating, you know, from the CBO side, we'd like to see us. Completely eliminate our structural deficits, so we can get to a place where we're budgeting pay raises rather than figuring out what services we're going to cut to pay for them. But but right now that if if we received the thirty five million as as estimated by the governor in the May revise, that doesn't quite get us there. It leaves us about twelve million dollars short on the multi-year projection. But twelve million dollars is a very achievable. Issue on a four hundred million dollar budget, whereas forty six is less so. So, you know, we're definitely looking forward to how we're going to receive those dollars. I'm praying we don't get it one time money, that we get it on ongoing dollars. So that way it smoothes out over time and makes our multi-year structural deficit problem look better rather than solving it for one year and it's still being the same the next.
Any other question?
President Phillips, I have a question. I'm sorry, President, President Christian, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So. Mr. McIntyre, there are a couple of documents that you use to build out your budget, right? Like you, you look at what the district wants, expects, what the district has vision and does, and then you build your budget around that, right? So one, is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
So one of those documents would be that the. The local control and accountability plan, right? So we have all of these goals, we have three goals, four. Now we have four goals in here and we look at these four goals and then we say what dollars? Or resources do we have to put towards these goals to make them? To be actualized or to bring them into fruition? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With the money that we're getting, all the money that we're getting, are we aligning that money? To match what we're saying that we're going to do in our local control funding accountability plan?
So it it's actually quite a thoughtful process. I I have to say what what. It really starts where Larisha and her team talk about what services they want to provide, and in all fairness to them. They they inherited year one of a three year plan, and so they've made some pretty aggressive changes to try to meet the student needs. And then they work very closely with the budget team to work up costs on all of those. So, for example, if if a position is just or if a program involves moving somebody, then we know the exact cost. But if it involves, you know, potentially different positions, different people or different programmatic expenditures. You know, time is taken to go out and look and see how much those things actually cost. So nobody just says, oh, let's throw a million bucks in here. No, there's real effort spent in detailing out the expenditure plan. And typically where we see variances, it has more to do with hiring people into roles that are part of the plan when they're not already in the system. I hope that answers your question.
I think it's, I think it does. I think it gets there to the answer of my question because we'll see things like we'll have all of these recommendations from asset and DL caps and. MDAC and we have on all of these recommendations have a price point for them, right? Their recommendations, but they have a cost. If we look at our goal one, it has a cost, goal two has a cost, all of these things have a cost. So I guess my question is. The budget is a reflection of what you value, right? And we're saying that we value the things that are inside this LCAP. That's what we're saying. We value the things that are in LCAP. We value the things that are in our strategic plan. We value the things that are in. Our mission and vision statement. I guess my question is, how close are we aligning the budget to the things that we say we value, right? If it's a kind of peanut butter and jelly sandwich where they mesh up perfectly, great. If it's not, and we're kind of off a little bit, how are we working to mesh that? Successfully, right? And what steps are we taking to make sure that we are aligning? How much money we have to what we say we value?
You've asked both a very simple and a very complex question all at the same time. I'll I'll try to get to both very quickly. First and foremost, you know, I it's very exciting that the community and the board are coalescing around their new strategic vision because that will become our north star. So can I say this budget is a perfect reflection of where we're headed? Probably not. It's going to require some adjustment as as that plan is finalized, but we can make those adjustments moving forward, and they're not going to be cataclysmic. Also, we're in the second year of the LCAP, so that means we've got really one more year where we're we're kind of guided by a set framework that was established before we got here. It's my understanding the county doesn't like to see just cataclysmic change in that document during the three year period. But one of the things that we've we've adopted for the future year moving forward is the team has already backward mapped the community engagement process for next year, and it will be. Far more robust between January. I mean, data will be happening before January, but January to April will be all public engagement. So all of our stakeholder groups and I. I heard a community member say we need to have more community engagement. We have many, many stakeholder groups. That weigh in on the different facets of the LCAP, and I would encourage anybody who's interested in doing so. We'll be publishing more information on different stakeholder groups to join or community forums to come see and hear information that moving forward. But you mentioned one of the things that we that wasn't done in the initial draft on the first year of the LCAP was we didn't take that community input. Cost out every option and then rank it based on how it fits our strategic and guiding vision for that, you know. Senior graduating student on what we're trying to produce. We do have a process laid out to do that moving forward, and it'll be part of that engagement process from January to April. But it wasn't something that we were able to implement in year two of the LCAP process because of the guidance that we can't just. Stop everything we did the year and go a completely different direction in year two. And so as we as we look forward, I think we're going to be able to evolve fairly quickly. And we do have steps and processes in place, and in fact, I'll be happy to share the rating document. That's been developed for evaluation of future year proposals. So you can see, oh, if a community made number, member made this type of proposal. We how it would be evaluated, how it would be rated, where it would be costed out. And then the nice thing is, once we have our list of here's, here's the thousand things that everybody wants, and then we rank them. We know that we just go right down the list until we run out of LCAP dollars, and that's where we stop. And if the state gives us another LCAP dollar, we just go to the next item on the list because we've all already gone through this process to agree. On each of the items that are there and what order they're ranked in. It really does kind of streamline and simplify and make the process of what what is chosen more transparent.
Thank you so much, President Christian. I am complete.
All right, thank you. That concludes. Public here. All right. F three. Literacy and support block grant.
President Christian, do you have to gavel us out?
Do I know?
Do you have to gavel us out?
All right. And. We go to F three.
Go ahead, Christie.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board and Trustees. I'm happy to be able to be here to provide an update around the early literacy support block grant. For my name is Chrissy Resignow, and I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for Elementary Schools, and I'm presenting here this evening. In conjunction with my supervisor, Darisha Martin, our Associate Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer. I know we've had a long evening, and I'll keep it brief and informative. If you can please go to the next slide. The three main areas I would like to highlight for you this evening are our sites that are served under the Early Literacy Support Block Grant. The awards that are mounted per site. The actions they have taken this year and some of the next steps and shifts that they're going to need to take. As they enter into year two of this grant in the next school year. If you can please go to the next slide. This slide details the school site, the elementary school sites who are included earn the Early Literacy Support Block Grant. These seven schools were identified based on their Sback performance. The last time we had Sback in two thousand and nineteen. And they were and we were invited as a district to apply from the California Department of Education to be a part of a three year grant to support early literacy outcomes. And the schools have been in a half year professional developments around best practices for literacy. As they were getting ready to develop their plant, their three year plans. And they engaged in a root cause analysis where they indicated where they need to go with their own individual school program. This next slide details the amount, the award amounts by site, how much funds were allocated per school. The total amount is in that three year award, and then in the third column, it lays out how much per school is given. The total grant amount is four million, two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and seventy one dollars. And these funds, we are working closely with our business services department to ensure that they're. Being spent in the exact manner which they're laid out in their board and CDE approved plans. If you can please go to the next slide. I'm going to be able to tell you next about the action steps the schools have taken this year and also some of the shifts that they've had to make. It looks a little bright because it's in yellow. So when you look at these individual school site. Actions, the things that are highlighted in yellow are things that have been added. And on the upcoming slides, you'll see things that are stricken through. That's what is taken out. From the last time that I came to you last spring for these board, for the board approval of these individual site plans. I'm not going to read to you what these individual school sites did, but I think it's important to note that there are commonalities where most. School sites invested in having a school coach either part time or full time. They they usually decided to get a supplementary literacy intervention tool. And professional development to support within that. And sometimes they had other items that they wanted to spend. And you can see what what is detailed here for Stige and Coronado Elementary Schools. And if you go to the next slide, it will lay out what two of our other schools, Baby and King had. You'll see a lot more yellow and strike through here. Once again, that strike through means that. It's something that they initially thought they were going to do, but ended up not doing for various reasons. A lot of it was doing to staffing. Not being able to hire the people that they wanted to hire. And then the the things that are in addition are were also highlighted in yellow here. All related to the same goals. And you see the same information here with Downer and with Nystrom Elementary School. The things that they were intending to do and the things they actually did do this past year. And finally, you'll see that also for Lincoln Elementary School and also for the central allocation. We were given a central allocation for funding for early literacy support block grant. A small amount of it did go to a couple of our program assistants for outside of contract time work they did, working with the schools on their plans. But a strong majority of it went for schools to have access to a DIBL's assessment system, which they wanted to try out. And also for buying books, decodable texts for the Early Literacy Support Block Grant identified schools. We thought putting the money mostly back into the schools was the way to go. And if you go to the next slide, please, I'll say thank you and just a reminder that I'll be here, back here every year, giving this. Update to you. I'm happy to field any questions you have around the wonderful work that these schools have been engaging in.
Question? Trusty Reckler?
Thank you. Thank you for being here at this lady.
It looks like they froze. So I see Ms. Mary Ann moving and I see Ms. Christie moving, but I do not see anyone else from Dejounte moving. So if we just hold on a minute, I am going to. And I see Ms. Cleveland moving. Okay, great. So if we hold on a minute, let me just send out a communication and see if they know that they froze. Everyone in Zoom land, just hold on one second. Okay, they look like they are disappearing. Hold on. Uh oh.
My guess is logging out, logging in, maybe. It's hard to know.
Well, let's let's hope that's it. Let's see what everybody hang on, stay online if you can, if you so desire. I am sending out communications. Okay, somebody's coming back. All right, Dr. Hurst is back. Dr. Hurst, y'all froze, but y'all come. Okay, somebody's coming back. All right. Dr. Hurst is back. Dr. Hurst, y'all froze, but are y'all coming back?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can. Y'all froze and you're the only one back.
But we lost internet connection here. So that's what happened. So we are just waiting for the internet connection to come back up, just to let you know.
Thank you so much. We are all still here. No worries. We're all still here in Zoom land. So we will wait for you. I am going to type a communication to everyone to let them know.
I did not mean to break our board meeting with my presentation.
Let's see. So I typed that. All right. They lost internet connection. They are trying to fix the problem. Okay. All right. We'll just sit and be patient. Ms. Cleveland, thank you for joining us. We really appreciate it.
Oh, I really enjoy this type of work. You know, it's just something I've done for many years.
You must enjoy it.
Yes, I do.
I think it's very much like a kindergarten teacher. You must really enjoy teaching. That's the group. They're great. They're great little people, but they are special. Ms. Mary Ann, will you introduce yourself?
Yes. Good evening. Can you hear me well?
I can.
Good evening, President Christian.
Oh, he's not here. It's just us.
Oh, okay. School Board Trustees. Yeah, I'm from EL Achievement Instructional Specialist. And when we get to the ELD adoption, this is what the part that Isawul and I are presenting.
Nice. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Isawul will be joining us soon.
Thank you. It looks like we may have, okay, so somebody's coming back on. Ms. Genesis is coming on. So we may be getting ready to start again. Thanks for holding conversation with me, ladies. We will be back to the meeting.
We just gave a 10-minute recess. We're still trying to figure out what's going on with the wifi.
So Dr. Hurst, 10 minutes, you, you say we want to reconvene at 11:20?
Say that again, Trustee Smith Folds.
So 10 minutes, 10-minute recess will put us back here at 11:19, 11:20?
11:17. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my clock is off. Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll see you back at 11:17, I suppose.
Okay. Thank you.
Back in order. Sorry about the difficulties. And we will finish up the meeting. E1. We're going to E1. Resolution.
President Christian, I had some questions for Ms. Christie, but would you like me just to send them in an email and then they be put out in a Friday memo or?
Yes, send in an email.
Ms. Christie, I will email you these questions and if they could be in the Friday memo, that would be great.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. President, so for item E1, it's resolution 862122, which meets the legal requirements necessary prior to any board election. This resolution calls for the holding of a regular governing board member consolidated election scheduled for November the 8th, 2022. We have two seats that are, that are up. The first seat is governing board member District 4, four-year term. The second seat is governing board member District 5, four-year term. This resolution is a regular form and if approved, and we are seeking approval on this resolution, if approved, then the clerk, which is Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, then attaches signature. And it would go to the registrar of voters for specification of elections. So we're asking for approval of this resolution.
All right, any questions? Do we have a motion?
President Christian, I'll move the resolution.
Okay, it's move.
I'll second.
Okay, in a second, but Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Comment. All right, then we go to the vote. Trustee Gliel.
Yeah, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler. Reckler, yes, sorry about that.
All right, Trustee Smith Foe.
Smith Foe, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yay.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, yes.
All right, and I'm a yes. All right, now we go to E2.
Go to our subdirector, Sonya Neely Johnson.
This is the public hearing part?
Hey, good evening. For President Christian, Superintendent Hurst, trustees and audience stakeholders. My name is Sonya Neely Johnson and I am going to be presenting on our local plan. So could we bring up that presentation? Okay, this evening I will be reviewing the West Contra Costa Unified School District Local Plan. And this is an annual plan that reviews the Special Ed Annual Service and Budget Plan. Next slide. So the Special Education Local Plan area covers our, our school district. It's a local plan that is updated every three years. It includes two sections that must be developed and adopted. It's our annual budget plan and our annual plan. Next slide. So under Assembly Bill 602, all SOPAs, which was the local plans, are required to submit an annual service and budget plan to the California Department of Ed for approval. And the purpose of this plan is to ensure that students with special needs receive services and all related services specifically in a geographic area. And in our district, it would be all the students that attend and live within our geographic area being, being the five cities that we serve. It also assures compliance with all federal and state codes and statutes. Next slide. So there are multiple parts of the plan. This year, we will just be updating three sections. Section A, which outlines the committee members and that includes our CAC and district staff, general and special ed. We will also be updating section D, which is the annual budget plan and section E, which is the annual service plan. Next year, we will be doing a full rewrite of the plan. And that is, like I said, done every three years. Next slide. So before a plan is submitted, we need to review the annual service plan and annual budget plan. It must be adopted at a public hearing, which we will be doing tonight. And it needs to be distributed at least 15 days prior to the hearing. The budget and service plans also may be revised during the fiscal year. Next slide. The annual budget plan includes administrative costs of the plan. It outlines the services for students with severe and low incident disabilities. And these are disabilities that serve students that are visually impaired, students that may be deaf, hard of hearing, or have other orthopedic impairments. Also, it includes services to students with non-severe disabilities. And then also any type of supplemental materials and services to meet the needs of students that are in our general education program. Next slide. And we are a single district SOPA and so multi-district SOPAs normally have these three areas. This doesn't really apply to our district. Next slide. So the annual budget plan consists of these components. This is where we get revenue. Assembly Bill AB 602 is the state aid grant. The federal ID Part B and Part B serves students K through 22. And federal ID Part C is the preschool portion. And then we also have the state infant toddler, state mental health, and then federal mental health. We also get revenue, other revenue such as the DOR and that represents the Department of Occupation Rehab and Workability and Medi-Cal Building. And we also receive contributions from the District General Fund and you heard that in Dr. McIntyre's presentation. Typically, district contributions from the general fund for sped is between 60 and 70%. And it's up from 50% five years ago. And we're projected for the 2122, it was up to 70.6%. And we've done a lot of advocacy around this at our ledge Action Day in May. One of the things that is always a point of contention is that support has been promised since 1975, 40% by the federal government. And we're only at about 14.6%. So that is something we continue to advocate for. Next slide. So the projected annual budget for 2223. Assembly Bill AB 602 State Aid is about 21 million. Federal ID Part B, 6, 6 million, six and a half million. Federal ID Part C and preschool, 83,000. State infant toddler around 17,000, 17 and a half thousand. State mental health, 1,800,000. Federal mental health, about 325,000. Other revenue and that comes from some of those other grants that we talked about, Medi-Cal building, workability, about 1 million. And then local contribution from our district is about 61 million. And then I, this was, this data was pulled a little earlier. And I think it's probably increased. I saw a higher amount in Dr. McIntyre's budget presentation. Next slide. So the annual service plan requirements, this shows the service, this shows the services that we provide as a district and the nature of the services that include our related services. And so most of our schools actually have a special education program, but some schools have more services and then related services. That is like your speech therapy, your occupational therapy, your physical therapy. Those are some services, adaptive PE, those may be services that students receive at various schools. It also talks about the physical location where the services are provided. We do have alternative schools and we have programs there. We only serve one charter school in our SOPA and that's Richmond College Prep. Next slide. So it also includes Opportunity Day schools. Sometimes these are operated by school districts. We don't have one at this time. And then Community Day schools, which are operated by the county. And then non-public schools and non-public schools serve our students. These are students that need, I would say, an additional level of support that sometimes cannot be provided in a general education setting. Next slide. So we have a continuum of services and we pretty much have all of the services listed. We have students in all of these services listed. Our district is, like I said, a single district SOPA and so we provide most services. We try to focus on having students in the least restrictive environment. But these, these continuum of services that are listed here start with leased and then of course residential placement and non-public schools will be a more restrictive environment. But we tend to work hard to serve our students and our general education setting with supports. Next slide. So a summary of the projected services. We serve about 4,200 students, birth to age 22. We have over 35 different special education services on 83 campuses and the 83 campuses includes our non-public schools. We do count them because we get ADA for those students. And we have over 800 WCCUSD full and part-time certificated and classified staff that support our students. Next slide. So the approval process for the local plan includes getting approval from your getting approval from your, the board here. Also obtaining signatures from the Board of Education and the County Office Superintendent, and obtaining signatures from the Community Advisory Committee. A presentation was provided to the Community Advisory Committee on May second, and we do have that signature. And we're also having the plan reviewed by our county and awaiting that signature. It should come by tomorrow. And the goal is to submit the plan to the California Department of Ed for final approval on June thirtieth. And then that concludes my presentation.
At this time, we'll open up for public comment on that item.
No public comment at this time.
All right. Any more comments? More questions?
President Christian, I have two questions.
Okay.
I have two questions. May I ask those questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Sonal Neely Johnson, do we, do we have a disproportionality when it comes to the placement of not who we place in non-public schools?
We actually have, we do that, you know, through the IEP process. And I would say that we work really hard to provide services within our system. But sometimes we do have students with severe disabilities that do need that type of placement. But it's really determined on an individual basis.
Thank you. And then the full plan, is there a copy of the full plan on the website?
I'm sorry, say that part again.
Is there a copy of the plan, like the plan that you sent to CAC, the plan, like, is there a copy of the full plan somewhere, like on the website, or is this the plan that we just saw?
Well, yes, so remember, this is, this is a three-year plan. We're just updating those three portions that I said, and they're, it should be in the presentation. We updated those parts, so there's links within the presentation.
Okay, so there's links within the presentation that we can click on and see the updated versions that you're adding to it. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And you had a question? It's closed, public comment. And public hearing. And you go to three.
We're gonna turn it over to Mr. Orozco, please.
Good evening, board. We're bringing before you E three, English Language Development, textbook adoption. And I have our director, Isaul Orozco, and Mary Ann LaFosse, who will be leading us through the K six designated ELD instructional materials adoption.
I'm sorry, I have a point of order. Isn't this an action item and we need to vote? I'm sorry for that interruption. I'm really sorry. So then I'd like to go ahead and move Special Education Local Plan, uh, annual budget plan or approval by the board.
Second that.
Any comment? All right, Tracy Smitho.
Smitho's, yes.
All right, Tracy Phillips.
Yeah.
Right.
Cancel so, yes.
All right, and I'm a yes. All right. Now. We all, E three.
And I proceed. Union's board members. I'm here tonight to inform you that decision by the Adoption ELD Committee has been made. And that decision has been to select Benchmark All Advancing Language Learning as the K six elementary designated ELD curriculum. We asked the school board to proceed with this decision as a school-wide adoption. This particular slide goes over the process, which began in the fall of twenty twenty-one, with the formation of the Adoption Committee, which developed a set of criteria to identify the best designated ELD curriculum for English learners K six. Furthermore, this process was accelerated by Williams finding for insufficient ELD instructional materials in K six schools. So there is an urgency to this matter. However, beyond the state finding, we use this opportunity to identify the best materials for our teachers as well and our students. Currently, there are over five thousand two hundred and ninety-eight English learners in our K six schools. That's close to thirty percent district-wide. And we really focused on providing that designated ELD time in a multiple fashion way for teachers and students. The Adoption Committee, through this criteria building, included administrators, teachers from a variety of schools, and two curriculums were identified. However, there was a clear winner in that identification process. And that clear winner was Benchmark All, as mentioned at the beginning of this presentation. The urgency for adoption was also presented with MDAC, the Multilingual Adoption Committee. If approved, and we're almost there, if approved, we are also have planned for professional development implementation at the benchmark designated ELD adoption this coming year, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. My colleague, Mary Ann, will explain the details of the following slide.
Evening, board members and cabinet members. Yes, the slide shows who was in the Designated ELD Committee. Isaul Orozco, Francie Conanier, Supervising from Library Services, Greg Wayley, Principal of Ella Horst, myself, and then a group of about sixteen teachers from a variety of the schools. You can see that on the slide. And it was pretty much divided, half of the teachers were from in the barter to second grade, and the other half from grade three to six. Next slide, please.
Elementary, no, excuse me, the Instructional Materials Committee, when they were looking at specifically at the ELD criteria, developed these essential criteria. The program should be California year ELD, English Language Development Standards Align, has to be approved by the State Board, the California State Board of Education, has to be aligned with grade level content as well as proficiency, English proficiency level. And it has to have a digital component, include assessments. And throughout the pilot, the teachers participated in the piloting. I identified a sixth criterion, which would be that the materials should be student-focused. Have, that means having the students' abilities and needs at the core of the instruction. And they should be user-friendly for teachers and students. And this refers to the lessons should be organized, clear, consistent in their design. And students and teachers should be able to access the print and digital materials with ease. Next slide, please. And let me see, now go back one more, please. Yes, Isaul.
Thank you very much. This is a central criteria. There was two finalists. Clearly, you can see that there is more than one curriculum out there that provides the needs. However, there was only one Benchmark All ELD Curriculum that met all of our criteria. And that slide shows that here. Next slide, please. Next slide. Again, we want to highlight the student-focused and user-friendly criteria that was developed by teachers and added on after the ELD adoption process in terms of the committee. As you can see, there are two quotes from teachers themselves and also a video clip. There are quotes of students as well that you will hear if we see the video clip. And with permission, can we, the video clip's about one minute long, if you desire to look at that video clip now.
The, the video clip, not the audio. And it illustrates the student engagement. I think this is the audio.
Yeah, the, the audio will be in the video clip as well. But we only have to see one. And while that, and while that get rate, there we go.
I think we need the sound.
We might need the audio after all. What, what this is showing is multiple ways that the teacher is engaging. I'm gonna see if the video's working or if I'm cutting off, folks. We can also try the audio. As you can see, we didn't capture all of it here, but if you watch it on your own time, the goal from teachers and our committee was really to capture that student voice piece, receive feedback. As you can see, the quote on the slide says, "Me gusta, leírlo," which means I like the book. And this is a reference to the Benchmark All material. And it didn't translate into an English conversation, which is instructional strategy of engaging students at their language at their level and building into English, which is the whole point of designated ELD. Next slide, please. Mary Ann, can you explain this one, please?
Yes. These are the materials that are included for the K one and the two to sixth grade. This, the teachers will receive a teacher guide, assessment, formative assessment, handbook, as well as some advancing foundational skills for English learners. Conversation pieces, like sentence stems, where they can, it's called the Think, Speak, Listen bookmarks. And every student receives ten texts, excuse me, ten consumables, one for each unit of study, and then one textbook that includes the ten units, as well as the digital access for teachers and students that includes the, the books, the activities, and the teacher's guide. And the price, as you can see, is like a million two hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and fifty-one. It's for six years, and the professional development is included in this, in the, in the cost. The funding source would be the restricted lottery funds for approved textbooks and core curriculum. We would, when this recommendation is approved by the, by the school board, we will not only be compliant with Williams, but more important, we'll be able to support our English learners during these protected and required designated ELD time that happens daily by providing a rigorous program that will help them develop the academic and the language skills and knowledge that they need to move on proficiency level so they can reclassify before they exit elementary school. Thank you so much for your attention, and I wonder if there are any questions.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, President Christian. Good evening, Mr. Orozco, Ms. LaFosse. Thank you so much for the presentation. I am truly excited that we are getting an ELD curriculum. A bilingual teacher who taught with that one. I guess I'm sure Ms. LaFosse can relate. And Mr. Orozco, anyways, my question's about PD. I was looking at what's included. I was wondering if you could talk about the six-year plan for PD and the initial PD plan for the summer and for the initial first year.
Currently, we have reserved dates that include whatever curriculum is adopted. Once adopted, those reserved dates are in July and August. But really throughout and continues, not only for this first year, but for all six years. Curriculum is not the problem solver. It's how that curriculum is used and adapted by teachers and students in the classroom.
But what I'm hearing you say is that we're gonna have plenty of opportunities for people to engage on learning how to use the new curriculum and how to implement it in their, in their classrooms.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. That's my, that was my only question.
Thank you. I, I did have a question about how when we do these curriculum adoptions and these textbook adoptions, I always have a question that I, I rarely ask. And I don't know if I forget to ask, but this is an opportunity to ask, how do we include parents and guardians in that adoption, right? Because you have these nice consumables that go home with the kids, right? But if we don't have parent, guardian, siblings, whoever's at that house to help that child with it, then it's still kind of that learning chasm that we get into, right? Because then the kid has to go back to school. So is this, in this curriculum adoption, have we thought about having parent nights and showing them the curriculum and how to walk through the workbooks with them and how to walk through the, the, the little readers? Like, you know, they were reading Zoom Zoom to the moon, right? So it's one of those things that what if a kid was absent that day? Like, the teacher may have moved on, but the kid goes home and it's like, okay, I wanna read Zoom Zoom to the moon, and the parents there say, okay, I remember how to do this. So we read it, and then you annotate it, or we read it, you annotate it, and we ask questions about it. Or you read it, annotate it, and you draw your picture, write your note card. Are we in a mind frame that we also want to train our adults, our parents, our guardians, our foster parents, all of those that touch our children to say, okay, we don't wanna miss a step, right? Because the goal is to reclassify before you exit elementary school. So to do that, it means it has to be an everyone investment. Have we thought about that? Do we do anything around that? That's my question.
Great question. It has come up in the initial, which is still standing, the X Adoption Committee. For example, the criteria of what student involvement is, be very detailed about that and add a parent involvement component. The criteria used here was really in terms of alignment with that student and parent voice piece, and I'll give an example. Within the bench, all curriculum are different ways of teaching. So for example, if you're focusing on needs, the curriculum is divided into three parts. If you are an emergent learning bridging, and then every, every component there. So those language pieces for teachers are in alignment with the conversations being had with parents. So I was presenting about the LPAC at an MDAC meeting. It would align to the curriculum that is going on in the classroom and where students need to receive that support and what scaffolds are provided. To build on to the next level. Um, that's a current example.
Another example that one of the piloting teachers share, it was that the students learn one of the poems throughout the lesson, that one of the lessons. And they presented to the parents there during the open house, no? Uh, to which was attended by, I think, twenty-one out of the twenty-two families. And the students were really excited, um, uh, to, you know, to show and, and recite this poem in front of the parents. So this is definitely something when we do our professional development to keep in mind. Because having the families as partnership is, is critical for our student success. So thank you for bringing that point up.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the answer and your, um, including that in your planning. I did have one more question. Can you just tell me how the pilot schools were chosen?
Invitation was sent out to all teachers, uh, in a variety of ways through email. Uh, the principal's bulletin and the teachers newly bulleted space as well. Um. That's how, uh, folks volunteered. Some folks, yeah, but it was open to all teachers to participate. In fact, the links, online links are, were opened since the process began. It was really more identifying the teachers that were committed to do the pilot in their classroom. That's the big ask, especially in this particular year. Um, from really everyone involved. So we wanna give a huge shout out to the teachers that did volunteer their time. And effort to, uh, participate in the piloting process.
Thank you so much and thank you to those teachers who chose to pilot. I'm complete, President Christian.
Alright, thank you. Uh, motion.
I'm sorry, may I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Thank you for your work. How involved was MDEC in the decision?
And that, and I actually brought it up to us, uh, as one of their concerns. Uh, so in, in. In maybe not October, November meeting, uh, MDEC brought up the concern. And then it was re-presented again in terms of this particular process. On an April twenty-eighth meeting that all reviewed other FPM items. Uh, in terms of reviewing pilot materials and in that aspect. That was not part of this particular experience. It kind of references the item that trustee Jemilla Smithfolds mentioned in terms of. How can we receive and incorporate, uh, parent participation a little bit more, uh, but it was, uh, part of our, uh, minutes for MDEC. We like to partner with parents strongly in the future.
Okay, thank.
President Christian. I'll make a motion that we approve benchmark advance, advancing learning for elementary K six designated English Language Development curriculum.
Reckler, second.
Alright, second. By Reckler. Comments? Reck.
So I really wanna thank everybody for their work very much. It's a labor of love fitting the curriculum, so I really appreciate it. Once again, in, uh, in curriculums, I think parents should be a part. There's no reason why they can't be. Um, this certainly for MDEC, it's super important that they're bought in and that they understand and that their concerns are brought forward. And then the other thing I just wanted to briefly mention is that, um, when we talked about the other curriculum adoptions. That we had earlier in the year, I asked for further information on how the money worked. And I just wanted to comment that I'm really happy that there seems like there's a really good firewall between the choosing of the curriculum. And then the dollars, and it feels like those are separated really well and so that the dollars are not affecting the curriculum. And so I just wanted to say that it sounds like a process that, um. Sounds good. Thank you.
Alright.
That's a special shout out to Francie Conanier for safeguarding that.
Trustee Phillips.
Um, I don't wanna be a contrarian and I know that it's eleven fifty-six, but I just want to say. Uh, to my colleagues and to staff, while I think that there are many benefits to involving parents. Um, and that I can see some benefits to involving parents and curriculum as well. I just want, uh. The board and the staff and the superintendent to tread very cautiously in that area. Because we're talking about ELD right now. And it may feel warm and fuzzy, but what happens when the conversation goes to history curriculum? Um, and we start getting into critical race theory or it goes to English textbooks and whatnot. Uh, this could be a really sticky wicket. Um, and I just want people to be, um. To think very broadly, um, because this could not be what you expect in the end. Because there's a very diverse viewpoint as to what should be taught and not taught. Um, and. It could cause a lot of trouble. That's all.
Any more comments?
President Christian, I wanna be very clear about when I'm asking about parent involvement. One of the things that I'm asking about parent involvement is. When you have a curriculum, how are you making sure that a parent is able to help resource that out at home, right? Like, how is a parent able to look at that and say, okay, I'm able to help my child at home because I understand the. The lesson planning, right? I understand how the book is laid out. I understand what the teacher is asking for in the classroom, so I'm able to add that extra layer. Of help when I'm at home. Trustee Phillips, I understand what you're saying when you're talking about if a parent should be involved, should we choose this one or should we not choose this one, right? There is, there needs to be a clear matrix on what we're asking from parents, but what I'm talking about more, uh, Ms. Mary Ann and. Uh, I say, oh, is what we're, when we adopt it, how do we then? Introduce that to parents as well as we're introducing that to the students and the teachers in our professional development world, right? We wanna make sure that we're engaging the parents in that process of this is the book, this is the adoption, this is how it's used, this is how you can help your child. That's more of what I'm talking about. I just wanted to be clear with that. Thank you.
Uh, definitely clear on our end. I just wanted to make note those, uh, those materials are still out in display in, uh, central office for any parent. Or any neighbor to visit and, and look through.
Alright, we go to the vote. Uh, Clark Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you. Just very quick comment. Just wanted to thank everybody, whether we include parents or not. I just, I know the work that goes behind. Uh, uh, the, the, the curriculum adoption, uh, for all the administrators and teachers that were involved in this process. I just wanna say thank you because it's a year's worth of, of work. Uh, and the adoption of a ELD curriculum, I know it's twelve o'clock and we're tired, but it's really important. And I'll, I'll tell you all that with so many English language learners in our district. Um, I know a curriculum is only a tool, but many teachers, especially newer teachers, don't know how to teach ELD. So you, the, you, the, the importance of the ELD curriculum is essential in the reclassification of our students. On the, in the learning of a new language, of especially for newcomers. So, so I don't want this moment to, to just pass this. Because I think that it is important the work that this group did and the work that both of you did and the administrators and the committee, so. Uh, and, and Ms. Martin and Dr. Hirst. Anyway, it's just gonna say thank you because, uh, I do know how important it is to have this tool, uh, that dispose of our sites. Uh, and, and, and how essential it is really for the movement of our academics, uh, for, for English language learner. So, thank you. And, and now we can move to the vote. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. And now we to the vote. Uh, trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smitho.
Smithfolds, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
And myself, yeah. Alright. E four.
Dr. Greenwood.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? I'm sorry, I'm trying to get situated. So this is a declaration to hire thirty-day, uh, substitute for C-Bass waivers. So we have to submit an application to the, um, California Teaching, uh, credentialing, excuse me. Um, this is a one-time application submitted every school year, and so, um, we're requesting that the board approve this declaration.
Question? Motion?
President Christian, I'll move the resolution number eighty-four, twenty-one, twenty-two. Declaration to hire thirty-day substitutes on C-Bass waivers for approval.
Alright, it's been.
Reckler, second.
Reckless second. And any comments? No comments, we go on to the vote. Uh, trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smitho.
Smithfolds, yes.
Uh, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Uh, clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, yes.
Uh, and myself, yes. Alright, E five.
It's Dr. Greenwood as well.
Again, this is another application that we must submit to the California Teaching Credential. Um, based on the, uh, declaration of need for cool, fully qualified teachers based on, uh, certain credentials, um, such as math, science, social studies. Um, around those areas. So we're requesting, um, that the board approve this declaration as well.
Question? Motion?
President Christian, I'll move resolution number eighty-five, twenty-one, twenty-two, credential assignments options for approval.
Alright.
Smithfolds, second.
And this is second. And comment? Alright, to the vote. Trustee Leon.
Leon, yes.
Trustee, uh, Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smitho.
Smithfolds, yes.
Uh, trustee Phillips.
Yay.
Uh, trustee, uh, Gu- Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, yes.
Alright, and myself, yes. Alright, and any care? Alright, and that concludes the agenda for this evening. And thank you, thank everybody for staying late. We finished. Have a good evening. And we adjourned at eleven oh four.